Good evening. Thank you for being patient with us. We ran a little late on the meeting ahead of this, but if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have the roll?
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
So as we start this evening, we have four public hearings, and we're going to start out with a brief description of each. If you're here for any of those public hearings, if you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address when we get to that point, we'll move forward. The first one is the rezoning of 455 Baldwin Street, which is our Public Works facility. Director Schrader, did you want to give us a brief description?
Yeah, thank you. And if there are further questions to Josh Radomski, the Director of Public Works, is available. But basically, what we have in front of us today is a request to rezone the three parcels that house the current parking or Public Works garage from I-1 Heavy Industrial to GU General or Government Use. With the looking at the new facility, this is kind of working into that process as we work through site plans, combining the lots to make sure there's no nonconformities through a CSM process, as well as hopefully at a later date, we'll be bringing back for the vacation of Baldwin Street. So again, I can answer any questions or go into it further. The Plan Commission did review this, and it felt that it did align with the comprehensive plan and did recommend approval.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. Item two is the rezoning of 638 Third Street. Director Schrader?
Thank you. So just for reference, this property is directly to the west of the Third Street diner along Third Street there. It was previously a single-family residential house that was torn down. So the current lot is zoned R-1, which would allow by right them to build a new single-family house. The owner did come to Plan Commission last earlier this month and requested this property be rezoned to R-2, which would allow a duplex to be built, and felt that it would allow some transition from the commercial development to the existing single-family homes further down the property. After the Plan Commission reviewed it, they felt that this corridor and looking at the comprehensive plan, we should take another look at the potential of future commercial growth along this corridor being a primary area. So they did table this, so there will be no action tonight at the Common Council as it will be going back to Plan Commission. One thing that staff did look at with him prior to going to Plan Commission was the C-1 General Commercial District. However, that existing lot does not meet those requirements, so we'd be creating a nonconformity in itself. So we're talking with the owner of Third Street Market to see if we could potentially look at future development, possible lot combination, and the future development of that entire corridor.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that this evening? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. Item three is the proposed city of Manassas budget for 2019. Director Jacobs?
As part of the package tonight, we were required to publish a public hearing notice for our annual budget. What we have before you tonight, we started the process, for those of you that are in the audience, is that we started the process actually back with the departments back in July, and we started also had a budget preliminary budget workshop in the month of August. So this is something new that we started this year, just to provide additional information to the council prior to getting really kicking off the whole budget process. Over the last couple of months then, other departments have submitted their information in to the Finance Department for processing and then onto the mayor's office. The mayor then took a look at consolidated, look at all of the different funds, all the different departments, and revenue sources that we had available to us, and then some challenges that were to try to balance the budget. And so what we presented tonight is roughly about a $51 million total operating budget, or total consolidated budget, of which the primary focus tonight probably will be spent mainly on the general fund portion, which is a little over $17 million. So what we have before you is a levy amount. There's three different resolutions that the council will take up as action tonight as part of this. The first one is for setting the levy, the tax levy, for the city manassege taxes. It will also include the taxing tax levy for the other taxing jurisdictions, which will be provide us the amounts that would be thrown or be placed onto the tax bill. So you will actually have tonight, the council will take action on the city levy, but there's also the Appleton and Manassas School Districts, the Fox Valley Technical College, Winnebago County, and Kelly Mac County. Those are all included on the resolution. So these are numbers that will be placed onto the tax roll. The second resolution is actually the expenditure authority, the appropriation level, that the city council will provide for all the different funds, not only the main general fund of the city, but all funds, including debt service, enterprise funds, which would be their sewer stormwater utility, capital project funds, special revenue, component units of our redevelopment authority, and debt service. And then the third resolution tonight is for the preliminary authorization for the borrowing. Typically, city Manassas does not do the borrowing until we actually conclude the projects for the year. What we've done this year is we've indicated the different funding sources, the different funding source, or different borrowings needed for some of our TIF districts, which collect property taxes to provide the funding for the debt service going forward for those. There is the main $1.5 million for the main general obligation debt for the city for all the different projects that we've got from the different departments, which the council has heard reviews from the departments in three budget workshops during the month of November. And then there's also the amount for the USDA loan, proposed amount for $10,740,000. So that is all included in that borrowing resolution tonight. As you, some of you might remember, the state trust fund loans require us to do them one at a time, at the time we actually do need to execute and request for the funds. So those will come to you individually over time as we actually do execute those. Same thing with the USDA loan. That one will be coming to us here in the next couple of months as we go ahead and apply for the loan and then come back to you. There will be some resolutions with those. But this is the preliminary resolution for the whole borrowing package for the city for the entire 2019 as it stands right now. So those are the three resolutions that will be considered later on the agenda tonight, and we do allow the public to comment on any part of the budget, or the borrowing, or the tax levy tonight.
Given that, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on the 2019 budget?
Sandra to Bill Taylor, 545 Broad Street, Manassas. I wanted to make sure at least someone from the public commented. Unfortunately, the two major committees that I wanted to view were not televised, Park and Rec and Community Development. So I'm kind of going in blind on some of this. I only have a short period of time, but overall, I think this budget is really lacking in fiscal responsibility. From what I see, I think very little effort was done to try to reduce costs. If my math is correct, we'd have to cut $1 million to take a dollar off the levy. As a reminder, we are landlocked. We're the smallest population, the smallest community with the highest tax rate, and that is going to haunt us until we get that levy reduced. Unfortunately, there's really no incentive on the mayor's part to do that, because if he cuts the budget this year, he has less to spend next year to the state limit. So it's a catch-22. But unfortunately, I don't see any effort to even try to cut anything. We're spending more money, and what we're basically doing is shifting dollars to other accounts. I believe it was like $100,000 in salaries that were going to be moved to one of the TIF districts from the Public Works Department. We have the $10 million Public Works facility, and granted, I'm all for the Public Works facility, but that is going to be shifted to the redevelopment authority. So it's kind of like, we have our checkbook, and we spent all the money. So now we're going to put part of it on a credit card, and then we're going to apply for another credit card. People at home wouldn't be able to do that. So that's why I say it's not really fiscally responsible. I was up here last year, and I came up with $1 million worth of cuts. And granted, they're tough cuts. They are not popular. But we can't be everything to anyone, and we're, my concern is that we're getting a lot more social programming in here, and I know there's a lot more collaboration with the school district and surrounding nonprofits. And we have to remember that the school district is comprised of Fox Crossing and Appleton. And I don't want the city to be paying a majority of costs that should be really allocated toward those other entities. For example, the parking lot at Jefferson Park is going to be used by the school district. I think a formal agreement needs to be in place, or something really designated for that it's not just a handshake deal, because that parking lot really needs to be shifted, that the school district has responsibility for it. Another sensitive topic is the Health Department. It's almost gotten, I mean, they do a fabulous job, and they get so many grants, but it's almost gotten to the point where it's like too big to fail. We do so much services, and so much of it is tied to the school district. The City of Nina does not have a Health Department. They go through the county. I almost think it's time that we seriously look at that, because it's a huge budget, and it really needs to be looked at where we put that responsibly on the school district. And another, one of the things that I found most interesting when going through this, I actually learned more about our budget by reading the NINA budget and the Appleton As far as the Senior Center is another example. People love the Senior Center, but we are paying, I don't know off the top of my head, well, well over $100,000.
It's about $75,000.
Well, when you add everything in with, you know, retirement benefits and all this, it's probably closer to $150,000, $200,000. And NINA, which I have in here, they have basically the same, I mean, they have rental of the NINA Manassas YMCA for 260 days a year, services of a full-time YMCA senior citizens activity coordinator, and one half-time assistant to plan, organize, supervise programs and activities. And that budget is $15,100. So I mean, that's $100,000 right there. Same with, they have a committee on aging, and that is like $150 that they have budgeted. I mean, I qualify to be part of the Senior Center, you know. Appleton does not have a Senior Center. They basically have put it on the nonprofit groups, United Way, and they're looking at developing a regional facility. And actually, our Senior Center wants to put a sign out in front. I hope it's not an electronics sign. But that's one of those where it's tough, but we have to come to the point where we have to start biting the budget. A couple other items is, as far as the mayor's office, I would again, and I've been over this year after year, removing the funds for the regional partnership. Appleton, it was originally intended that it was per capita, a dollar per person for each community. Manassas, roughly 17,000 people, it was $17,000. We had upped it to $20,000 to allow the mayor to be on the board. Appleton, with their population, they originally were in it, then at one year, they pulled out totally, then they put some money back into it, and this year's budget, they're eliminating funding for the Fox River, Fox City's Regional Partnership of $36,000, and they're leaving, I believe, $15,000 in for the upload, talent upload portion. And that's still only, is, that's still less than their population. So I think that's another one where I think, and Appleton is the one that's most likely going to benefit. I've yet to see any benefit come out of this. And if people are concerned about losing out on the Bazaar After Dark, that $20,000 could throw a big party. On top of it, in your check register of November 1st, we had another $3,500 to sponsor Bazaar After Dark. So it isn't like they were doing them for free anyhow. I also really question a lot of the civic commemorations, if any of that is left in the mayor's budget, including the fireworks and events. I think that money needs to be designated to Park and Rec and Community Development, and that's basically because there could be an implied conflict of interest. The mayor does own a building in the downtown, any banners, flowerpots, tree planting, I mean, even the redevelopment of Main Street, in a sense, because his building is going to benefit from any improvements that go down there, including the tower and redevelopment opportunities. He will benefit from that. I don't think he should really even be in some of the discussions that go on. There's also quite a bit of money from TIF districts for the paint and restore program and some of the housing rehabilitation. I think before we throw money at it, there should be a report of what has transpired since this was initiated last year, where the money went, how much of it was owner-occupied, how much of it went to landlords, how much it really did serve us, and if it's a program that's working before we keep throwing money at it. As far as the transportation or part of Public Works Department, I mentioned about their salaries getting shifted. On our tax bill, we have a $5 recycling fee that's been there for, since the recycling program started. It's got to be 10 years. So that's at least, you know, $50 that's already been set aside to pay for my cart. I strongly believe that there was a sunset clause in that, that after so many years, it's been over 10 years, that that fee would disappear, and it still reappears. My thought was that, and I've been following this a long time, again, if you look at NINA, they've initiated a transportation fee. It's not a wheel tax, and this is something that actually could strongly benefit the City of Manassas in that we have always been compared apples to oranges when people look at our tax rate, because our street improvements are built into the tax levy. If we were to initiate something like this, all those street reconstruction programs, sidewalk programs could be removed from the tax levy to allow the mayor to spend more money and be initiated into a fee, which is actually more fair, because it's based, how NINA did it, they based it on the stormwater REU funding. A single-family house is one REU, one unit, it was like $25. So a flat fee, $25, and then businesses were allocated what their REUs are. And the benefit behind it is that it also includes nonprofits, because we have a huge amount of nonprofits, especially where these gentlemen were just proposing another TIF district. When you get out by Goodwill and United Way and the whole corridor along Midway and 47, that that actually could help with utility costs, infrastructure, they benefit from it, they should be part of that fee structure. And that could actually, in the long run, it would greatly benefit the city. As far as the taxpayer goes, they, many people would probably see a reduction, because currently it's based on the value of your home. It's not based on, you know, who you drive, or who drives or who doesn't drive. And also, it's if you have a two, you know, a two-story house with two cars or whatever, it's not equally assessed. So it's something that should be looked into. I know other communities are. The wheel tax was, would never work, because you can register your car anywhere. And with 60% transient in District 2, 40% transient citywide, people would register their vehicles everywhere and anywhere to avoid it. And another thing, just kind of a, it's always considered like low-hanging fruit, but the training, the seminars, the hotels, the meals, the mileage. At one time, there was a restriction, it had to be like beyond 50 miles before some of this. If you, it looks like a little bit, little bit here, a little bit there. If you started going through the budget and started adding that up, you'd have thousands and tens of thousands of dollars allocated toward just that. I wish I knew more about what Park and Rec was doing. I couldn't watch the video. I wish I knew more about what Community Development was doing. I'm concerned about Park and Rec. I'm concerned about the amount of money they're spending at the playground at Jefferson Park. I think it's like $600,000 for a playground. I know NINA Riverside Park, where they have the rocket slide, which is extremely popular. I proposed a long time ago, we could do something similar and make it into a lighthouse. That was $150,000 for that area of Riverside Park, and we're looking at $600,000. NINA recently did Washington Park, and I think their playground area in there was about $100,000. So I don't know where we're coming up with $600,000 for just the playground. I could go on and on and on, but I'm just, I hope someone cuts something out of here. One thing I did want to mention also was the wages. I have no problem with the proposed 2.25% raise, but I would like to see it in a two-tier, where someone making $50,000 and getting a 2.25% raise is different than someone making $80,000, $90,000, $100,000. I think there should be a cutoff that above a certain level, at least a quarter of a percent less, at least, if not a half percent less. That would help in that area. So good luck. I hope someone has the gumption to actually cut something out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else this evening?
And I'm certainly not as prepared. I actually feel bad standing up here, not having the information.
If we could get your name and address.
Sure, it's Amanda Wood, and it's 1804 South Bowton Street, and that's actually an Appleton address, because my husband and I were curious to come to this meeting to review where the money was going towards. We're currently looking at properties to purchase, and we found a house that we loved in the City of Manassas until we got the $10,000 tax bill, and we looked at each other and laughed and walked out of the house. So for me, it was curiosity. You know, we're walking away from homes, we're going to homes that are larger in other cities with a $5,000 decrease in taxes, and it seemed quite ridiculous to us that Manassas was a great place to live, granted, a little smaller than some of the other places we're checking out. But why in the world would we be charged $10,000 a year in taxes to live here? So we wanted to check out the budget and see exactly what was going on that would warrant that type of costing. So you know, as we're talking to other people who are also looking for homes, it's kind of laughable and embarrassing that, you know, Manassas is known for these outrageously high taxes, but nobody seems to understand why they're so high. I hear steam plant and different things like that, but I can't wrap my arms around what's really going on here, because you're not incentivizing people. The more people that you have come into your city, the more equally you can distribute the tax, the taxes amongst everybody. So for me, it's a matter of just sitting in and seeing what the situation is, because you have people in new Manassas subdivisions who are selling their homes after a year and a half or two years to get away from the taxes. And to me, it seems a bit negligent that that's the kind of budget that you're forcing them into. So I think that there's some answers that people need. You're going to keep losing people. I mean, I just looked at a two-year-old house online in Manassas. I called my realtor, and again, they can't afford the taxes. It's way too expensive. They have to get out of the city. Other friends of ours have had this happen. You have brand-new Villaway subdivisions that have houses that have been lived in with for-sale signs out in front of them, because people want to get out. So again, I think it's just a look at, you know, are you doing? So, again, I think it's just a look at, you know, are you doing due diligence? Can ticket costs go up? Can you have sales taxes to take away from some of the property taxes that you're putting on people? Are you looking at bailouts for the steam plant obligation that you're putting on your constituency? Are you doing everything that you can do to make sure that you're taking the liability off of the residents who live here? So, sorry to jump in on one of your, your meetings, not as a resident, but I was very curious as to why I would have been charged $10,000 in taxes if I moved here. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is for the intent to apply for the USDA rural development loan.
So the, this public hearing is for the intent to apply for the USDA loan program. It's a step that we do need to take in order to actually complete our application for the USDA loan. There's no action required from the council at this time. It's just a matter of allowing the public a chance to be able to speak on the fact that we are pursuing this loan opportunity.
Seeing that, is there anyone who wishes to speak on that?
Me again, Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just wanted to comment that my understanding is that this loan is going to be going through the redevelopment authority. And as I mentioned during the public hearing for the budget, that allows the city to take this off the tax roll and have it on the RDA. The intent is that by the time the steam plant gets paid off and will finally be cleared of that debt, we will now enter into a $10 million debt for the public works facility, which they want it to go through this funding so that it can be stretched out for 30 years. So it's almost like we're never going to crawl out of debt at this rate, and that's what concerns me. My other concern is that with it being the rural develop, or I'm sorry, the redevelopment authority, and I was going to speak at the rezoning portion of the public hearings, but a redevelopment authority is actually established to eliminate blight, slum clearance, and create urban redevelopment. Are we basically going to have to have a resolution that this property is blight in order for the RDA to handle it? Is this going to have to turn into a TIF district, even though you can't really have a TIF district for a public facility? Those are just questions, I guess, the Community Development Department's going to have to answer. But the funding is fine. It's, it's a lot of paperwork, and it's not something that you're going to be able to rush through and make amendment to and amendment to and, and rush like you kind of usually like to do and wait till the last minute. But the rural development funding is, is based on populations of like less than 20,000, which means we don't want to grow too much, and low income, which means we're kind of, you know, it's another catch-22. We're trying to make the community higher-end and waterfront and promote it as, but yet we don't want to do too good because if we get out of that threshold of basically being a census tract of low income, we'd lose the funding. So, good luck.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll call that public hearing to a close as well. And the next item is public comments in any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone else on that subject? Seeing no one. We are going to, if there's no objections from the common council, move Item I-7 up to the front so that the Youngbuckers and Ellers don't have to sit here all evening. Alderman Sevanik?
No objection.
I didn't see any objections.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to continue forward with the creation and the process of creating this new TIF. I believe it's number 14. Also then, meeting with the Planning Commission Joint Review Board, and then back to the common council for approvals.
There's a motion in a second from Alderman Langdon. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? I'm too speedy, sorry.
No, I did not get, I did not get the motion.
So you'd like it just right off the memo, correct? So direct city staff to continue forward with the creation process of a new TIF district, including.
Meeting of the Planning Commission Joint Review Board.
And common council.
Final approval.
Okay, then we're going to go back in order at this point. Item F is the report of department head, staff, and consultants, the first item being the minutes and communications to receive. Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the common council to receive minutes A through I and communications J through M.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanik?
Sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor?
Item J, the C Street Bridge, public involvement meeting. Last Monday, there was a meeting here at City Hall about the bridge, and none of us were invited to that. And I don't know why that was, but it was brought to my ear.
There, there's typically a staff meeting before the public, the public information meetings. So staff did meet with those items regarding the bridge to see what they had planned on proposing to show to the public to make sure that we were able to gather any background information that we thought there might be questions on.
I would appreciate the two Aldermen, that, that bridge straddles our districts, should have been invited to that, too. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Were you opposed, Randy, or just?
No, I was.
Or just late? Randy, were you opposed or just late in saying aye?
I was just late in saying.
Okay. Just trying to make sure. Item G is the consent agenda. There are eight items this evening. The minutes from the common council for approval from November 5th, and the budget review sessions from November 1st, 7th, and 14th. The administration committee recommendations from November 5th, accepting the renewal quote from municipal property insurance company for 2019 in the amount of $37,555. The board of public works recommendations from November 5th for the street use application for First Eve. The payment to MCC for new street construction, various streets, $276,457.04. A change order from Donald Hipponson Sons for Manassia Utilities and City of Manassia Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction was an add of $5,435.60. And the personnel committee recommendations from November 14th recommending maintaining the same insurance program and level of benefits to employees in 2019 with the elimination of out-of-network coverage, with the continuation of the HRA component, increase in funding of the HRA level to 40%, and increase the maximum out-of-pocket expenses to employees by a potential 1,000 single and 2,000 all other plans by utilizing coinsurance component after the deductible levels have been met, and to provide health insurance at the rates and terms listed in the memo dated November 13, 2018. In addition, the cost of the city's health insurance program to retired employees includes both 100% premium costs and 100% of the HRA administration and HRA 40% funding for 2019, as well as the 2019 wage and salary increase of 2.25% and 7.5% health insurance employee premium share for nonrepresented employees, as included in the 2019 budget as per memo dated November 13. No. I'm not sure who was first. James, Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to remove number four.
Maybe?
Yep. Thank you. Items three, five, six, seven, and eight.
I'm not reading seven again. Just so you know. Is there a motion for the minutes? Alderman Sevanik?
I'll move for the common council minutes and the budget review session minutes.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the acceptance of the renewal quote from Municipal Property Insurance Company for property insurance coverage for 2019 at the annual premium of $37,555.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item four, Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the street use application for the First Eve, Monday, December 31, 2018, from 2:00 PM till 12:30 AM, Community Forward Incorporated.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
If the mayor, Alderman Taylor, left to abstain.
That's fine. Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Oops, except I'm too fast.
Motion carried on roll call 7-0 with Alderman Taylor abstaining.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve payment for MCC Incorporated Contract Unit Number 2018-2 for new street construction and street reconstruction, various streets, in the amount of $276,457.04, payment number five.
So motion in a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Go ahead.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve change order for Donald Hipponson Sons Incorporated, Manassia Utilities and City of Manassia 2018 Water Main and Sanitary Reconstruction, MCM Number M0002-9-17-00839, add $5,435.60, change order number one.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Do we have a motion for item seven? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I would like for us to pass over seven and eight. As we go through the budget process, some of that might change. So I would ask that we move to action item one and then come back to seven and eight.
If there's no objections, I would be fine with moving forward. Item one is the accounts payable and payroll for November 8 through 15. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 8 through November 15, 2018, in the amount of $869,780.30.
So motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 19. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated November 15, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Was there discussion?
No. Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
There is one license that's recommended for denial. I do not know if Mr. Bergner is here this evening. Is Mr. Bergner here this evening? Seeing none. Seeing that he's not here, is there a motion for either approval or denial at this point? Seeing that he's not here, is there a motion for either approval or denial at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the denial of the Operator's License for Devin Bergner.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Apparently, the attorney would like to ask a question.
Can I ask the police chief?
You're awfully far back there tonight.
About the convictions that are in this individual's record?
Specifically, or, I mean, to which ones, or?
Correct.
So, we know that there were convictions of resisting and obstructing an officer in a case that is a 2018 case that was charged out by the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department. There is also a, uh, case that we do not have a disposition on because it was an OWI related to a town in Manasha arrest, and it was held in their municipal court. So we don't have the disposition because it doesn't get reported to the state. Or it's still pending, one of the two. Those are the two most recent. We start to drift into when it becomes a juvenile, and I don't know that we really want to get into juvenile records. So I guess we would kind of hang it on those initial ones, or most recent ones.
And can I ask you, it says showed convictions for resisting and obstructing an officer on June 18, 2016, and August 6, 2018. Is that what you have in your records?
Yeah, the earlier one, again, would be when he was not of age yet. The later one, he may have been referred as an adult. I guess I don't have the records to that. But the more recent one was an incident that did occur in Manasha, and we were the arresting agency.
And the OWI, what year was that?
That was 2018.
Okay, so, uh, then...
May of 2018 by Fox Crossing Police Department.
Okay.
So I don't have a disposal on that one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Seeing no further questions, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, seven one.
I'm guessing that you voted the wrong. I was going to say that if you vote yes, it means you're denying, and if you vote no, it doesn't. But it's still, it's still worked out the way that you had thought you were doing it, so we'll move on. Item three is an amendment of a Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal Model Update Agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of Addendum A of Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal Model Update Agreement between the City of Manasha and Associated Appraisal Consultants.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Should we not have a dollar amount, and not to exceed?
The, there's no cost.
That's right.
So we could do not to exceed zero.
Correct, exactly. What they're doing is they're substituting what they typically have done, of doing a one-quarter of the city revaluation in-house, and now they would, in trade for that, they would end up doing the entire city and do the recalibration of the model and the formula that they've been using, so. But it'd be no additional cost.
Any further discussion? Ready? If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Item four is a Class B Liquor License Application for 204 Coffee House and Wine Bar. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the Class B Liquor License Application for 204 Coffee House and Wine Bar LLC, Brandon W. Landreau, Agent, Doing Business as Your Daily Grind at 204 Main Street, Manasha, for the 2018 through 2019 licensing year.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no one, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Item five is a Listing Agreement Amendment with NAI Fefferley. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the NAI Fefferley Listing Agreement Amendment.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. Director Schroder. Uh, there are two agreement, two listings, um, in our packet. One is for 140 Main Street, and that one runs from October 31, 2018, to April 30, 2019. And the other properties that are listed have a 12-month agreement. Is there any reason why both couldn't be 12 months?
Yeah, I just, um, uh, that's a great question. I actually caught that right after this, went into the packet and called the listing agent with that. Six months is just their standard agreement time. We typically request a year, just because being a city, it's a little bit easier to do it on a, on an annual basis, seeing that we have to go through the, uh, the Common Council in this process. So I, I would certainly be open to, you know, making the amendment to the 140 Main to, to be a full-year contract, and they, they don't have any concerns with that either.
So Fefferley would be open to making that?
Yes.
A 12-month contract as well? In the interest of keeping things consistent and easy for all of us and staff, if there's not an objection, I would like to amend my motion to, uh, have 140 Main Street be from, or be until October 31, 2019.
There's a motion, a second, to amend by Alderman Langdon. Any discussion on the amendment, Director Schroder? No? Okay. Could we have a voice vote, then, just on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion stands amended. As I was sitting here waiting, I also noticed that 87 Racine Street is still on the list of properties. I don't know if we need to worry about that or not, but, um, we did sell that one.
We just haven't cashed the check.
So there's, does it matter?
It is located on the, uh, it's not located on the amendment, the physical amendment that we signed. They just attached the addendum of the original listing for reference.
Perfect.
It is sold.
I hope so. Since it's got a building almost complete on it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, on the motion as amended?
Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Item six is a donation of land from the Manasha Corporation. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Yes, I'll move for the acceptance of the donation of the land from Manasha Corporation, Parshall 3-00892-00, and 3-00890-00.
So motion, a second, by the other Alderman Grady. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with all the improvements on this property for probably the last 12 years, uh, why is it, was there an agreement that the trail and all that could be built on it?
I have no idea. That was before my time as mayor, and I'm not sure if I was, I don't even think I was on the council at that point. In fact, I wasn't on the council at that point. So I'm not sure how that ever got built on that property, but they are generously donating it to us, and I think that we should generously accept it.
Thank you.
Probably. Um, seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Item J is heldover business from the Administration Committee of November 15. Is there a motion, or are there any questions regarding that item? The, the item was heldover with questions regarding could we use other video companies to provide videos, and there's no problem with that. We can do as many videos as we want with as many companies as we want. Uh, we just cannot post those videos on their website. But they're happy to work with us if we are going to work with other companies. Uh, we cannot use their video footage in our new videos if we wanted to do that, but there's no problems with us having additional contracts to do that. The other question, if I remember correctly, was the, um, letter that went out as part of the sponsorship program, and that was just a sample letter, and they will work with us to have that letter be in any manner that we wish to have that letter. There was something regarding counties and towns and that, if I remember correctly, but I did speak with the rep, and she, um, sent me a new sample letter. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the video that City of Manasha owns your place on the water, can that be posted on that website?
It may be able to. I did not ask her that specific question, but, um, that, it still can be posted on our website, and we can post as many videos on our website as we wish to.
I understand.
Yeah. Um, I did not ask her if we could place that on their website as well, but we could ask that as well.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Does anyone wish to make a motion to either move forward or not move forward with this program? No? Okay.
I don't have a problem. It's just, it's administration. I usually allow the chairs to make the motion.
If, if someone wishes to make the motion, then, then we'd move forward, otherwise, I'm not sure what happens. It'll just reappear on the agenda until someone makes a motion to either table, approve, or deny it. So we'll move on. Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance Number 21 is regarding the rezoning of the Baldwin Street property. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of O-21-18, an ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the district. And this is regarding the public works facility on Baldwin Street, and recommended by the Plan Commission.
So motion, a second, and I'm not sure who the second was?
Was it Tom?
Tom? Oh. Okay. Okay. I just heard about eight people, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Must have been before I had it ready. Motion carried on roll call, eight zero.
Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move for ordinance O-22-18, and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter II of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the mayor's salary.
There's a motion, a second. The attorney's pointing at me. She, she pointed out that we would need to suspend the rules because it's the first time that it's on an agenda, so we're going to have to back up. Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to take up O-22-18.
So motion, a second, to suspend the rules. Suspension of the rules takes a three-quarters vote, two-thirds, which is the same number, I believe, anyhow. So it would take six votes to do such. Good catch, by the way. We had discussed that earlier, and I forgot. Oops.
Motion carried on roll call, seven one.
Okay, Alderman Sevanek?
One more time, I'd like to move now for the adoption of O-22-18, the ordinance amending Title II, Chapter II of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the mayor's salary.
So motion, a second, by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. If my calculations are correct, that would take the mayor's salary to $70,000 in 2024. And I'm curious where that would fall, uh, among comparables of same, of municipalities the same size and within the area.
So we did just a teeny-tiny bit of research, and the only ones that I pulled were Nina, Kocana, and Appleton. The Nina's, the current salary of the Nina mayor is $79,250. The current salary of the Kocana mayor is $78,960, and Appleton probably isn't a great comparison, but just because we got it, it's $99,110.
Thank you for sharing that information. I was just seeing how many years out that is. That's about six years. And that would still have us behind our neighboring communities, um, substantially. So that, that would be, um, I agree 100% that this is something that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure it's being addressed enough. I'll yield the floor and listen to what others have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually did take a look at pretty much all the comparables, uh, of all the cities throughout the whole state, and all the cities with full-time mayors, when you take out Milwaukee, Green Bay, and the bigger cities, it's, it's pretty close to what most other mayors are making throughout the state. I mean, it's still a little bit behind, and, and by the time six years are done with, might have to just a little bit more, but at least it gets it right within the general ballpark of where the other cities are comparable to our size throughout the state with full-time mayors. So, just wanted to add that.
Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is an, a political issue, and it's been one for such a long time, and, uh, we have a, a new council here that tries to stay away from that, and, um, I just felt it was appropriate at this point that we stop, uh, this, uh, process. We've come a long way, this community has. Um, this lady, uh, that came up earlier and was concerned about her high tax... community has. This lady that came up earlier and was concerned about her high taxes, there's a lot more that we can do, but there's, as Alderman, I mean Sandra Taylor said, you're not parent, comparing apples to oranges here. And we know that in other communities, they don't assess for certain things. We're one of the few communities that, once you put a street in, you don't get reassessed for it. You know, we provide, I think, services of and beyond what other communities can. Our leaf blowers, the way we collect our garbage, we don't charge a fee.
Alderman Savinek, are we still on mayor?
Yes, yes. So just getting at, you know, the, it, it got to the point where people were using this as an excuse for not increasing the mayor's salary, and mainly the, the steam utility. And I think that, that issue is done with. If anybody wants to argue with me in the future, either in the community or whatever, that there shouldn't be an increase in this. We are behind, as Alderman Kruger said, and I thought this would be the best first step. I know that when Alderman Ted Grady came on, he, he also felt the same way and was hoping to do something. He wanted to give this mayor a salary increase right off the bat, which we legally cannot do. I would like to do that, and by doing what I did today is kind of saying, you know what, we think that you're better than that. So I, I decided to propose a salary increase over the next four years, and it's, and I believe that it's time that we do that.
Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, should you recuse yourself and?
This would not apply to me.
It applies for your reelection.
This would not apply to me. This would apply to who's ever running in the next election, and I don't plan on speaking.
Don't plan on running, no.
I didn't say that.
You made that announcement.
I did not say that. I said, I don't plan on speaking on this this evening.
And you all know I enjoy history, and I, I sat next to the mayor up here.
And don't be putting words in my mouth either.
Well, I sat next to you up here and helped defeat the, the Joe Lox increase, which your wage would have been much more by now, but you led the charge on that one. So I just repeating history here, Mayor. So now it comes to pay the piper here.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify a little bit what Alderman Savinek said, I, I did come on board. I did not say this man, Don Murkis, should get the raise. I said the position of a mayor in the city, oh, in the City of Manasha should get the raise. Hmm? No. But just to make it clear, the position should be increased, and I, you know, kind of agree a little bit with Alderman Nichols. Is, is it not enough? I don't know, but it's a start, and let's just see what we go and happens from here.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item three is Resolution 2918. So this is the resolution levying taxes for the purpose of paying the operating expenses for the year 2019. So typically, the way we would do this is we would have a motion to approve as presented, and then we would accept amendments following that. Alderman Savinek?
Should we do the amendments first, and then?
How do you amend something that isn't on the table?
Well, we can make a reduction, and then put it forward. I can do either.
We've never, we've always done it the other way unless it was at?
No, we've made cuts well before.
In the committee hearings, yes.
You got, most of you guys, oh, I am sorry.
I just turned you on.
I'm sorry. I thought you had me on. We used to call this Piranha Night. This was the night that we made most of those, those changes because it gave us time to, to digest what all our department heads brought forward, and someone took my paper. All of my things are not here. What's the council's desire either or? Don't matter. All righty.
Have to have something to amend.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion for R-2818.
Okay. There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady, Ted Grady. Now amend away.
I was extremely organized until everyone started shuffling my stuff around here.
It always happens that way.
And now it's not here. Well, I would like to go first, but if you have just a question, I'll yield, I'll yield to James.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. John, in civic commemorations, how much is in that budget rate this time? And that's Budget 100-0408. And if you have a breakdown on that as far as what they were spent on. $159.
Before, before the, are you talking for line item 2106, or which line?
Yes, yes.
We have in there for $29,000 for the fireworks, also for the Memorial Day Parade and the Labor Day Parade. So those three items are the full $29,000.
Okay. And what was spent last year on those three items?
For two, for 2018, we have a year-to-date number of $29,850. So we actually are proposing a reduction from what our year-to-date actual was for 2018. So it's actually $850 lower than what we are projecting, and we have already spent to date for this year.
And could, could you break that down even further? What was the, the fireworks cost?
The fireworks are $29,000. The Memorial Day Parade is 600, and the Labor Day Parade is 250.
Is it our fireworks offset by, I think it was Festival Foods?
And then there is also a revenue account. I don't know exactly where you put that, John. There was $9,000 from Festival Foods and a small donation from the Manasha Banks, and there may have been one other one. We budgeted for this, oh, there was also a $5,000 donation from, I, I don't know if that person wants to be anonymous, but there was also a $5,000 donation there.
We, we, the donations are on page 16. We have grand total for the entire year.
So we spent about $35,000 on fireworks or more?
$29,000.
Okay. And then we had a, an additional?
And those were off, that's an offset. So of that $29,000, only $9,014, so about half of that was on the levy. The other half was donations.
Okay.
Somewhere in that vicinity.
As to last year, we have some money left over from that, then?
No.
No. We, the total line item is $29,850, so after the donations come in, we have spent all the funds for this line.
Okay, thank you.
I am furious. I am furious that it was taken off of my desk. John, do you have our conversation?
I actually left my copy up on my desk also, so.
Oh, that's going to be a long night.
You want to, just, we can run up and get, grab it.
I can do that.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
We'll stand at recess until Mr. Jacobs. Everyone has returned. Alderman Savinek, did you want to start?
No.
No? Okay, we'll take you off.
Okay, so we did already do the vote on the resolution?
It's just on the floor.
It's just on the floor, so now you can amend it.
All right, then I would like to offer some amendments to R-2918. And my first item will be on page 11. I just wanted to discuss that a little bit, just so that the council is aware of this. The very top one, sale of properties, we have $100,000 put in there. That's part of the possible sale of City Hall. So just, you know, we're applying that, but there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. So just like in the past with the fire department property of 75, that never sold either. I mean, if we really wanted to, we could probably take that 75, too, and then say we're going to sell them, and then just increase revenues to try to adjust the levy. But I'm just, I just wanted to point that out because I didn't catch that earlier. I didn't know what the $100,000 was, and I called John, and he informed me. So the next item is page 15. This is the common council's budget. And I'm probably the, the, the most guilty up here of probably talking the most. So I, I'm going to promise the council that I'll try to keep things down, but we all have to be better listeners, too, because a lot of things are being repeated after another Alderman has just talked about it. So anyways, I'd like to reduce the recording fee by one, by reducing it by $1,000. We currently have 10 in there. I'd like to reduce it, and then the amount would be 9,000, and that is account 513.21-08. Looking for a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second it by, by Alderman Rapala? 405. Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just reviewing the, the numbers here. Director Jacobs, could you review for us why it was felt it was important to increase that budget? I know we've had conversations about this in the last few months, especially since closed captioning came about.
Correct. When we, if you remember, we amended the budget upward by the, roughly about $4,000 to add the closed captioning here mid-year. So when we amended that upward, we amended it up so that the total of the recording, and I don't remember what time of the year that was. That was some months ago. So we didn't put it in for the full annual 12 months for 2018, because we were partway through the year. So what we're doing now is that $4,000 in there for the closed captioning, for the $150 per meeting for 27 meetings is the 4,000. So you have the recording fee, which we, for the 27 meetings, which is the two times a month that we meet for the common council, and then for the three budget workshops. So that's the 27 meetings. So the increase of the budget is from 80, was proposed at 8,700 was what we had for this year, which did not include closed captioning for the entire year because we just started that like mid-year this year when we amended the budget. And that, for the full 12 months for next year, would be the 10,000 total. And you can see the breakdown, 6,000 for the recording fee and 4,000 for the closed captioning for all 27 meetings.
And that's an average of how many hours per meeting? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
That was a number that the mayor came up with, and I don't remember how I came up with that number. We, we, we looked at Debbie's costs for the previous years and kind of took an average, but I can't remember exactly what that, well, we could divide it. If you take, if you divide it by 20s. Yeah, I don't remember what the cost per hour is, though, was the problem.
Okay.
So, but we just looked at the average of previous years.
Okay. And, and I just recall having this conversation and also having to go through a budget adjustment to fund it for this year.
Correct, for a portion of this year, correct?
Yes.
But now it would be for full effect for all 12 months of next year.
And is that $150 fee for closed captioning, is that the same as 2018, or is that an increase?
That should be about the same as this year.
Okay.
Per meeting. Some meetings run very long, some meetings run very short, so it's.
Really? We have short meetings?
Once in a while. Not tonight.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If we could have a roll call vote, then, please?
Motion carried on, roll call seven one.
Alderman Savinek?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item would be on page 19. This is the city attorney's budget. I am looking under legal, 512.2101, year-to-date. Well, let's say, actual was 8,876 in '17. Adjusted budget, we're about 10,000. This coming 19, they're looking at 15. I thought out of fairness, I was thinking of a larger amount, but just to see where we're going with this, I thought I would just cut 1,000 from that particular budget.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady? Is there a discussion? Did you have a discussion, Stan?
No, I just wondered if Debbie got it. It was 512101. Okay.
Sure. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to ask the city attorney if she feels that will still allow her to conduct any legal business in an acceptable fashion.
Attorney Captain?
As I mentioned during the budget hearing, that number is just a placeholder. I have put in 15,000 before. The mayor typically gets at that number first, and then, you know, it, how, I really can't predict, just based on what's coming up next year. So if there, something happens, then we, I just come before the common council and have to talk to them. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Ready? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Alderman Savinek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to look at page 44. This is the general fund for the police budget. No, I would rather do it this way.
Alderman Savinek is the floor, and.
Oh, sorry, page 44. I am, but before I do, I would like to ask the chief a question. This is pertaining to 50, I'm sorry, 5213403, the lodging. This is pertaining to 50, I'm sorry, 5213403, the lodging and meals. And I know that this one can jump around. And last, in 2017, it was 5,178. This year is being proposed of 8,500. So I was looking at reducing it 1,000. But I wanted to hear from the chief why the, the jump. I'm sorry I didn't ask that during budget review.
No problem. Biggest reason is because we don't have the definitive numbers yet, but as we had talked about in the, in the budget meeting, we will have two people going to different command schools next year, one of which is one of the lieutenants going to the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. The FBI Academy pays for everything except getting him to and from, and some of his living expenses when he's out there. So the tuition's all paid for, the, the room portion and most of the board is paid for. So it was kind of a shot in the dark, not knowing exactly what his expenditures would be for that training, but that, that's what the increase was from.
I would like to reduce that by 1,000, and obviously, I wouldn't want that to be a decision not to go or not, you know? It can always be a budget overrun. But I'd like to reduce that particular budget, 5213404, by one, taking out $1,000.
3403, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the 03.
Okay.
Wait, yeah, sorry, my eyes, it blurred.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that we have one of the most professional police departments in the region, and while I respect efforts to cut the budget, I also feel that it's really important that our police department and their officers continue to engage in professional and training activities that allow them to bring things back to use in our community. Thank you.
Alderman Repala?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to increase that cut of $1,000 to go to $1,500.
So the way you'd do that is you'd make an amendment?
I'd like to make...
And then we would ask if there's a second for that amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment to double, to make that $1,500. Is there a second?
Yes. So is there a second to make the reduction an additional $500? Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of a second, and we maintain the original motion of reducing that account by $1,000. Do you have anything else, Randy?
No, thank you, sir.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I stated, it's, it's an amount that doesn't jeopardize anything. I'm just afraid if we took any more out, that, that could be the possibility. So I feel that the 1,000 reduction is, is a fair amount.
Seeing no further discussion? You ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you again, Mayor. Page 147. I can understand the need for overtime in some cases. I looked at the salaries that are earned already in the library. They're extremely high, in my opinion. And although I am not going to eliminate, I still would like to make a small reduction. I think that we can manage reducing that also by $1,000, and that's sub-account 55110-03. The overtime and double time, currently there is budgeted eight, practically $8,000. It's $7,995. I'd like to reduce that by 1,000 to make it $6,995.
So Alderman Repala? What's your discussion, Alderman Grady?
Yes, a question for Vicki on that. I saw, or I see in 2017, your overtime was $7,195. So you're really tracking maybe a little bit higher. Can you explain some of the stuff that does go in there?
Yeah, like I said, I talked to the payroll clerk about that, and our, they do get premium time for working Sundays, which is their regular time plus $2 an hour. And the only thing that goes in there is the extra $2 an hour. So I really do believe that that is overtime for the custodian, because all of his wages come out of the library's budget. He's a full-time custodian at the library. And if something happens on a weekend, we have to call him in because we're working with a skeletal staff on a weekend. So for any kind of building emergency, or the sidewalks being, you know, with the snow and all of that. And I think that's why in 2017, it was $7,195. And I, I added a little bit to that for next year, just in case, you know, the, the building is older, more things can go wrong, and in case the weather gets bad.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor.
Here we go.
Thank you again. I think Vicki did a good job of explaining that, and I would like to withdraw my motion then, because I was under the assumption that it was for those who are making $72,000 a year, and not necessarily the maintenance things. And so that's a good call, so I will move my motion. I withdraw my motion.
Typically, once the motion is accepted, we don't remove them, so we should probably continue to...
I don't know where you started doing that, because if, if I withdraw my motion, and whoever made the second decides, it's no longer germane.
Once the body accepts the motion, then it's the motion of the body. And if we want to change that rule, I guess I'm fine with that, but it's, we started doing that, we should probably stick with it now. There was a second, yes. So we can just vote it down, that's fine.
Okay. Whatever. Yeah, why don't you write that one down for protocol? Because for me, that is the proper way of handling that.
We can, we can pull it up in Robert's Rules for you and show you what it says. Yeah, we can do that. Oh, can you just? Let them vote. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're all kind of waiting for each other here. So this is for the $1,000 reduction to the library overtime budget. Mark, did you?
Motion fails on roll call 26.
Alderman Sevigny?
156. This is Brian's budget, the swimming pool, the overtime. Didn't really get a good answer. Adam said we could possibly live without. So again, it's overtime, double time. It's 552-10-03 overtime. I'd like to reduce it by the full $1,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Langton. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Tungit, could you refresh my memory on how that money is usually used?
So the, the money you see that was spent there for overtime was primarily for preseason painting work, sort of getting the pool basin ready for use in the summer. We don't necessarily expect that to happen, or something like that, similar to happen this coming summer. The only caveat maybe here to reducing it all the way to zero is that, you know, we can, can have some, you know, chemistry, operational issues that happen on weekends. It didn't really happen last year, but it could happen. But I would just, you know, just throw a little bit of caution out there, that, you know, there could be some money expended out of overtime, just something just unknown that we don't know. But right now, as far as preseason work goes, there's really nothing on our, on our schedule that would indicate that we have to spend any overtime on a preseason basis.
And where do lifeguards and pool employees fit into that equation?
They wouldn't be in that overtime budget.
Okay. I'd like to offer an amendment to decrease the reduction to 500.
There's a motion to reduce the reduction by $500 to 500? Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. The original motion is still on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Alderman Sevigny?
Let's see, I don't know which one I want to go to. Page 170 will go in order here. At our last meeting, we had lengthy discussion about our sick leave payout. And this is put through several different budgets, and there is not a line item for this. And so when I was talking with, oh, wait. No, no, there is. So, okay, sorry about that. I just have it written here, is it on here? Yes. So 100, 1199, 519, 151, did I write the right number now?
1510 was the number we had talked about. It would be a new line item.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that is a new one. Wait, I thought it was the other one, on page 185.
It, it's both in tandem. This, this one impacts the general fund that you are, that we had talked about here, and then there also is a matching amount in the fund 260 also.
So this is the 8,000?
Yes.
Okay. That, to me, was on page 185. But anyways, I'm gonna go to, if you don't mind, council, we should go to 185, so I can make my point. Sorry about that. Remember, they handed us out another added sheet, so it's a, it's the handwritten 185. If you've noticed, that the unused sick leave bank has $25,000 in it. This year, we're gonna fund in it. Would appear to want to fund $70,400, which would give us a total of $95,400, and that's based on the possibility of retirements coming up. I don't see as many retirements. I'm not pulling the complete program out, although I've had two people contact me and tell me this should be eliminated completely. This is not done in the rest of the private sector. I called Alderman Taylor's brother, who works at Intertape. They don't get a sick day payout. Another lady told me they don't do it at KC. This is a really special, special, very special benefit that this community is entitled to having. It's an entitlement that we offer. So I also have to look out for the taxpayer, too. And I'm not ready to eliminate this program. I do feel that, I'm ready to help out the taxpayers a little bit, though. So I would like to propose taking, is it the 8,000 on this one, off the levy?
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. So this removes $8,000 from the sick leave, the bank sick leave fund. Yeah.
And then there is a new account number for that, that will be, that's not in our budget at this point.
Any discussion on that? Alderman Grady?
I would just like to ask Director Jacobs, Stan's understanding of this, same as your understanding of this?
He's, he's wonderful, wonderful understanding numbers. What we had talked about earlier was that to lessen the funding level for 2019's budget year, we had proposed a 1% new fringe benefit expense in every department, every funds, for those that qualify for sick time. What we planned on doing then is to have a reduction here on page 170 with the new count number that Alderman Sevigny had mentioned. What would happen then is at if, this would at least get us to where we need to be for tonight, so that the expenditure level for the resolution would be reduced downward. If it were to be approved, the levy amount would be reduced downward for it to be approved tonight. And what I would do then is I would work with Jennifer, and the two of us would bring together a distribution. My plan had been all along for the health insurance reduction. You see there also. It's just I can't do that until the health insurance plan is approved. And same thing with the sick leave here. So that, at one of the meetings in December, we'll bring you back the distribution, because I can't leave a minus amount in of operating budget here in this, on this page. It'll have to be distributed across all the departments. But for it to get for where we need to get to tonight, it's, we're giving you the grand total amount of the reduction, and then also the reduction in the levy that was recommended, or was proposed.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Why was your original request to fund 1% from each department for this?
Based on when our admin team had looked at the number of proposed payouts and retirements in the next three years, the funding level that we're at is not sufficient to cover for the next three years with the, with the existing policy. So we were going ahead and increased it from a $60,000 funding level to $70,000 with a 1% across the board, and we had planned on doing that for, for roughly three years. And, and then what will happen after the fourth year, four years from now, five years from now, there's a lessening of the number of planned retirements of people that would be age-eligible, that would have any kind of a balance. Typically, you need to have at least 10 to 11 years of tenure with the city and not using your sick leave for this eve, this, this benefit even to kick in at all. So we had, we just looked at the number of possible retirees. So, we had, we just looked at the number of possible retirees in the next three years, and with the three to four a year over the next three years across all departments, excluding the fire department, obviously, because that goes through the Nina Minashe fire, all others, that we needed a funding level that was a little bit higher than we had been doing the past few years.
And in the past, had this been traditionally budgeted for as sort of a lump sum? This year, it's been spread across departments?
Correct. What we had done previously is you had, had a tax levy amount that 100% went to the tax levy of $60,000. You'd done that for a number of years. I don't know how far back that went, but it went for a number of years. So, what, when I looked at this and had talked with Director Isker, Finance Director Isker over at Nina, with, what they have been doing, and how they handle Nina Minashe fire rescue also, they actually have created a policy where you actually spread the cost across the, across the departments and all funds. That's the change. That will save the city money, save the taxpayers' money by allocating across not just the general fund and the tax levies we've been doing. It would spread that cost across the stormwater store, all other funds that we have with the city, not just general fund and not tax levy based.
So, in essence, then, what's been presented is already a reduction?
It is a, the tax levy impact was directly reduced by $60,000. However, now, those funds that had to include this additional fringe benefit line in the budget, some of them, maybe about six, or about 75% of them are funded by the general fund. So, 75% of this is still being funded by the general fund. But as Alderman Sevigny and I talked about, we, we talked about a different, about a couple different numbers, and this would be the direct number that would impact, that he was looking for, that would impact just the tax levy, just the general fund.
Okay. And then, what would be the impact for the 2020 budget? If we're planning on funding this over the course of three years to get it where it needs to be, what are the future, future impacts?
At the present time, for 2019 and 2020, we might have enough funds there, but by 2021, we would not have sufficient funds there to cover the existing policy.
Okay. And how does that affect, how does all of this affect our, our audit? And when we go through our audit, this is accounted for at some point?
Yes, we are fully funding this from an annual basis going forward, yes.
So, would that $8,000 reduction still allow it to be fully funded?
It would be, because we have a fund balance in that fund right now. But this, I mean, we had proposed an increase in, with, due to the number of retirees that were coming into play, plus, we actually do have the benefit of a couple retirees that will actually age out of the program. So, those funds that the city had fully funded at the point of the retirement, or leading up to the retirement, those funds are no longer available to the employee. They will now become eligible, so now that it will actually be used, can go back to the city to be reapplied elsewhere. So, that is helping us for 2019's budget.
Okay. And how are these funds used by the employees?
At the, it is put aside at the time that they retire, and then it's eligible for them to enroll in the city's, help, continue their health insurance benefit, and the funds can be used, then, to pay their premiums until the monies either are totally used up, or that they no longer are, are now eligible to enroll into Medicare at age 65.
So, the funds are used to pay for health insurance or health care costs?
Yes.
Okay. And this is an earned benefit? It's part of their compensation package?
Under existing present employee handbook, yes.
Thank you. I feel strongly that doing anything with banked sick leave would need to be, and should be addressed through the personnel policy, which is coming forward, and not through budget adjustments. And I'm also concerned about what our funding for this would look moving forward. I understand that it's fully funded for 2019, and maybe 2020, and there's definitely some question marks after that. And so, for those reasons, I will not support this reduction.
Alderman Repel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to raise that up to, from 8,000 to 10,000. And my reasons being is if we're running short of money, as the steam plant gets paid off, we will, as that debt decreases, we'll have more money to set aside for an account such as this. So, I'd like to raise it to 10,000 from 8,000.
There's a motion to amend the budget reduction to 8,000, from 8,000 to 10,000. Is there a second? So, motion and a second. So, now, we're talking about just the amendment? Is there discussion on the amendment? Do you have anything else, Randy?
No, thank you, sir.
Alderman Sevigny?
I wasn't going to talk about it, but originally, that, that was my thinking, Randy. But that's not good to do, because what we want to do is be fair with this program. This affects, when, when, I'm just looking at the levy at this point, and that's why we're just removing the $8,000. I totally agree with Alderman Nichols about addressing this in the future. That's exactly what I want to do. I want us to get us through this budget, and then in 2019, I, I'm going to be talking to Alderman Grady, and we, we're going to have to look at this as, how we decide to go forward with this in the future. So, I would, I, I understand your intent, but it actually throws a monkey wrench into everything. So, I would, I would be opposed to that amendment. At this point, your intentions are absolutely good, but it's, John, you want to explain it better than me. It's, it's just going to kind of throw a monkey wrench into everything, so. If that's all right, Mayor? If I can have John talk.
Alderman Nichols kind of hit on it. It's just with the number of employees that have earned the benefit over their tenure with the city, at some point, if we don't fund it or don't fully fund it, the, where are we to go to get the, the funds for it? So, we were trying to create a way to, to have not only the tax levy portion of the budget, but also other funds to contribute towards it. So, that's where I came up with a proposal, similar to what the city of Nina's been doing. We do have a fund balance in there right now, but at some point, that number, if we have more, I mean, we're planning impossibly as much as we put in the budget, $80,000, which is, and it might go up going forward, because we do have a number of individuals that'll be, are eligible anytime to retire. And so, and there was a promised benefit that the employees had earned and worked their, quite their long career tenure with the city. So, I guess the fear is that you don't want to cut it too much, because once we get and have three or four a year for multiple consecutive years, and we aren't funding it, then the fund balance will go zero, or in the negative. And then, it's like, do you reduce the benefit? And then, what about those that'll be coming a year, two, or three years down the pipeline? So, when I talk with Alderman Sevigny, we kind of talked about that a little bit, and I understood where his direction was coming from, to do, to make a reduction in the funding level, but not too much of a funding level until we have a little further talk about this going forward in time.
Alderman Sevigny?
Basically, we need to come, we need to. Well, I guess not anymore, but we'll change that in the future. But, yeah.
Okay. So, since I'm guessing we're going to have a split vote, we're probably going to have to, to actually do a roll call vote on it. Sure.
Do you want me to put to amend the reduction, maybe?
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah. Are you on the big one?
Now, now, we're on that one.
There we go. Perfect. That's fine.
Are you ready?
Yep. So, this is to amend it from $8,000 to $10,000, the reduction. And then, well, we're going to have a vote either for 10,000 or 8,000 after this one. Yes.
Motion fails on roll call 1-7.
Okay. So, now, we're back to the motion as originally presented, to reduce that fund by $8,000. Alderman Krueger.
I think, Mayor, I just, I guess it's more of a statement that this cut's not going to affect anybody directly this year and possibly next year. And if this goes through, this council had darn well better address this immediately so this doesn't linger out there. This is not something that can just sit on by. Just want to make that clear.
These are earned benefits that we're talking about here. So, these benefits are already earned. You cannot take those benefits back. What this is, is for future benefits, and to make sure that, what you're talking about, that we have enough money to fund those future benefits. So, Alderman Sevigny?
Just the one thing that I wanted to say is that this going forward is going to need to be a policy decision or a policy change. So, that's why it's the 8,000.
So, seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote on the original motion?
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Alderman Sevigny?
Okay. I have one more, and then I thank everybody for indulging in my, finding my little pumpkin picture and having this information. There's just one more. John, you and I had talked, I kind of caught something during the budget process when we were dealing with insurance, and that piece of paper I didn't bring with me. So, I, there was, the city did a great job of going out and trying to provide the best type of health insurance for our employees. It is a very outstanding benefit. It's something that a lot of companies no longer provide. We have a very good plan, and they were able to go out and find a reduction. And with that reduction, they budget a certain amount, and it wasn't the full amount, but there was still, like, what was it, like, between 15,000 and 16,000 left?
The exact amount was roughly like about $19,000 left over, yes.
I would like to reduce that by $10,000. Oh, can you give the account number?
Sure.
Did not have that written down.
Sure. It's on, still on page 170. It's account number 100-1199-519, .15-01 for health insurance. We presently had estimated roughly about a $50,000 reduction across the general fund and all funds for savings that we were going to try to get that health insurance renewal down. We were able to do that successfully, and a little bit more than that. We, when you do the distribution, it's, the original distribution was roughly about 80% was to the general fund and 20% was all of the funds. So, we had put in here a holding amount of 39,543. And the proposal that Alderman Sevigny is talking about is to increase in that reduction by an additional $10,000 reduction, since we do have a little bit more in savings there, that we could accommodate that. And that would still leave a little money left on the table to apply towards any other employees that would end up changing, possibly going from single to, to married, to a couple for insurance, or going from, say, married to family in case they were starting a fam, or if they were blessed with starting a family in 2019.
Or if they had twins.
I got, exactly. My perfect sidekick here.
So, is there a second for that motion? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Krueger. Any further discussion, Stan?
I, I just wanted to elaborate. I'm sure that, hopefully, Randy won't want to take another nine out of there or whatever, but there was a reason that I did it this way, and that is exactly the way John explained it. Benefits could change, as he had stated, with, from one, one individual to another. And so, we needed some kind of cushion in there. But what I do want to say is I want to commend all the staff that worked on this. This really is a biggie in, in our community. 20 years ago, when I was on the council, we, we never even talked about insurance. We, it was an item that was there. Okay, we recognize it, and that was it. Now, we're spending literally hours on this particular topic. So, it's just, you know, it's, it's what's out there today. So, good, good job for all those that did that work. Appreciate it.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I just need a clarification on what we're proposing to do here. Is this an additional $10,000 in savings towards health insurance premiums?
Correct.
And that's directly accounted for in levy dollars?
Correct. All Alderman Sevigny and I talked about was just to focus on the levy amount. So, what we're proposing is to increase that reduction amount here, and then Jennifer and I will come back either at the first or second council meeting with the distribution that would be allocated across all the departments.
And you feel that's a safe enough amount that employee contributions will remain the same and give you additional flexibility in the event that new employees might come on, or current employees need to change plans?
We, if you have one person, one employee that would switch from, say, spouse, with employee spouse coverage to family, that would not be enough to cover the difference, the additional $9,000, additional amount. Likely would not quite cover it for a full 12 months. It would maybe cover it for a portion of 12 months, but not for the full 12 months. But then, there also could be possibility of some people possibly switching the other direction also, from, if they have their children that maybe age out and are no longer eligible, or if you have someone that goes, switches, just ops decide to go from married couple to single plan. So, we might have some of those. I don't know, the, from year to year, it, it varies.
And my question is, you feel that you have enough in that account, so to speak, to allow for any possible changes that could occur in the 2019 cycle?
The only thing that would save us would be if you have some positions that are not filled for a number of months during 2019. That would provide the additional savings for those employees that are not on the plan. Otherwise, we would not have this, this cut would not, or the monies left over would probably not be able to cover, maybe, you know, just maybe one employee switching, but not for two or three, switching, going upward in costs, or upward in the plan. But then, that effect might be fine if you have some that do go downward. I don't have a, that exact number of how many go up and how many go down each year. But there are some that do go both ways.
I'm not getting a clear answer.
It's because there isn't a clear answer.
There is no clear, you're right.
It depends on the year, basically.
Yes.
So, if we have a couple retirements that were family plans, then we hire the new people on single plan, that's great. If we have a couple people that get married during the year, that's not so great necessarily.
Against marriage?
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions about that? Seeing none, we could take a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Other amendments or questions? Alderman Grady?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Stan, you took some of the ones I was going to propose, so thank you. Thank you, council members, for approving those cuts. I know its budget time is not fun time, some I know it's budget time is not fun time sometimes, but we got to keep that, uh, levy down too. So I'm looking at page, I'm starting off small, five hundred dollars. On page thirty-four, the assessors' general fund. Uh, it's under John Director Jacobs. There's an account number one hundred dash oh four oh two five one three dash two five dash oh one. Other municipal entities? I mean, it's not much. I'm just looking at, um, the five hundred dollar cut here based on what kind of was in there in two thousand seventeen. I don't know if you want to explain why, you know, I think there is a little bit there of that five thousand for next year.
What is the account number?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dash oh one. Middle of the sheet.
Director Jacobs?
The reason for the reduction is that we received a letter, um, not that long ago that said that, and, and we have to hire the, and pay the, uh, Department of Revenue from the state of Wisconsin to do the manufacturing assessment for properties. They sent us the letter and they said that the letter was roughly about four, um, about forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred dollars. So therefore, that's the only thing that basically comes out of this line of five thousand dollars that we had projected. And you can kind of see that for two thousand seventeen, the number was forty-seven thirty-one. Uh, for two thousand eighteen, forty-five eighty. And the number does continue to go down ever so small, but it's because it, they do it on a formula based on the valuation of manufacturing property. And it's something that ours, our local assessors do not do. It's only for manufacturing and at the state level. So they send us a bill and they say you got to pay it by March of the next year.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady and Sevenek. Is there discussion? You ready? Five hundred, yes. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote then, please.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Alderman Grady.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, let's go on to page seventy-eight, which is, duh, 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 street construction. I know the public works and the, you know, they do a fantastic job and their budget has gone down from year, from last year to this year. But I was looking at something, if we could transfer the, uh, account thirty dash eighteen. It's a stone crushing of seventy-five hundred dollars. If that could be moved into a, hmm, more of a non-levy type account. It'd be like, uh, first we can look at the, you know, the page seventy-eight and stuff, but I'm recommending that we move that to page two sixteen, which is in the general funding for stone crushing. If we could, I don't, maybe, you know, first, Josh, you can explain a bit of the stone crushing type thing and for the street constructions. But is that something that can be taken out of the levy and, and moved to that other department?
We, we can move, you know, seventy-five hundred or so to the stormwater fund. It is used for our curb and gutter construction as well. So the crusher rental is the fee that we have to pay to crush stone and keep it at our, uh, dump site, pretty much. And we do use that stone for our projects throughout the year. And some of that stone does go to our curb and gutter, which does fall under the stormwater account as well as, you know, if we're replacing inlets, some of the stones used there. So a portion of that fee can, or funds can be switched over to the stormwater fund. So, yeah, so as long as.
Strong with that seventy-five hundred, that's safe.
Seventy-five hundred would be acceptable to move from the one hundred account to the six twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady and Sevenek. Any discussion?
John, do you have that?
Seeing no further discussion, as soon as the clerk is ready. Okay, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Alderman Grady.
Yes, let's move on to page ninety-six. That's also in the public works, I think, ninety-six. Yes. I know it's down for the, um, let's see, count, the tools and equipment, thirty dash fifteen. The GPS that we have, two-thirds cost of the GPS hardware of five thousand, set for a two thousand nineteen budget. Is that something that could be pushed into two thousand twenty?
Uh, we have actually two options with that one. Uh, it is actually budgeted for our two thousand and eighteen. So the reason that we rebudgeted it for twenty nineteen is because we didn't get around to purchasing it yet. So there's two options. We could either rush and purchase it by the end of twenty eighteen. We could carry over the funds from twenty eighteen and use them in twenty nineteen. Or we could hold off until twenty twenty. Uh, as far as the option that we would choose, I haven't a hundred percent decided yet. It would be dependent on what we end up, you know, deciding on the GPS hardware to begin with. But, uh, that would be the three options that we would have to, you know, so if you, even if you removed it from the budget, we could still potentially utilize those funds to purchase that equipment.
Yeah, and further, instead of spending it now, this year. Okay.
Yep.
But my question.
Go ahead, Alderman Sevenek, maybe. There you go.
My question would be, would that affect the levy at all if, if, if it's just a carryover? Or?
John?
Or is it, or does he have it budgeted as an, an additional amount? Because the way I'm reading this, this is an additional amount.
This is an additional amount, yep.
Unless you're, you have it somewhere else in your budget as a carryover.
We, we have it from twenty, we have it budgeted for, for this year. We just anticipate that we would not actually spend it this year. So we could carry over this year's funds. I believe that takes place early spring. So that would be an option, would be to carry over the twenty eighteen funds to purchase that GPS hardware.
What are the twenty eighteen funds? Twelve thousand, seven hundred?
Uh, there are the five thousand that would cost, we would carry over the five thousand for the cost of the GPS hardware.
Okay.
You're, you're looking at both of them, though, the, both in the refuse collection budget and the recycling budget, right? So it's actually seventy-five hundred dollars, five thousand in, in garbage and twenty-five hundred in recycling.
So what are you proposing doing?
Oops, let's turn you on here, Ted.
Thank, thank you. Since that was page one ninety-one, is the GPS and recycling a different budget? But, yeah, the two, the two, seventy-five hundred dollars there is pushing that off of the levy for two thousand nineteen and to still carry forward those monies so you can have, buy that equipment later on since you haven't purchased it yet.
Yep.
Okay, and Alderman Nichols?
I'm very confused. I have, uh, we were talking about thirty dash fifteen. And this is two-thirds cost of the GPS hardware at five thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about?
I, I believe we're talking about that item, the two-thirds cost of GPS hardware on page ninety-six, as well as the one-third cost of GPS hardware on page one ninety-one. So there's five thousand on page ninety-six and then twenty-five hundred on page one ninety-one.
One ninety-one is twenty-five hundred. Page ninety-six is five thousand. And now what are we proposing, what are you proposing to do?
Just move it forward off the levy for this tax year. And then have them have those monies for the following year, two thousand nineteen budget, to put it in for twenty.
So are we carry, carrying over the two thousand eighteen funds?
Yes. Yes, carry forward seventy-five hundred.
If, if money allows in the two thousand eighteen budget, we'll bring that forward to the council in March or April to carry those funds forward? Sometimes we carry funds forward, sometimes we'll rebudget it. In this case, that will take that seventy-five hundred dollars off the levy for two thousand nineteen. If there isn't enough funding left in the eighteen budget, then we would have to delay the per- purchase till two thousand twenty, when we could put it back in the budget again.
So is the full seventy-five hundred accounted for in the two thousand eighteen budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And do you know if it's still available?
Uh, we have not purchased anything with those accounts. However, the carryovers are dependent on the overall budget for the city and not just dependent on department, by department. So that would be a determination that we would have to make at the end of the year.
Okay, and what is this hardware used for?
I'm going to transfer that back to Adam because he would have a better idea as far, he's, uh, you know, going to have a better idea as far as what exactly it's used for.
I feel like I'm on The Price is Right.
What it is, is it's hardware that we were going to put in our garbage trucks. And it not only will track the location where the vehicle is, it'll help with, excuse me, help us with our routing. And how we intended to use this is that we'd have, um, like a touchpad in the vehicles and we'd be able to note potholes, extra garbage, uh, low hanging branches, and help create these lists for us, work orders in the future to have the location for us. So there's a, a number of things that, uh, we can use it for. So that, that was the intent. And we were going to start out small, do it with the garbage trucks. Um, there's many communities that use it in all their equipment. Um, they can tell when the plow's up, plow's down, when the salter's running. We were going to put it in our street sweeper so we could tell how many times we've been around the city. So it opens the door to a lot, um, a lot of data to help us, uh, be able to, uh, use our equipment more efficiently, our materials more efficiently.
And our staff more efficiently.
And our staff more efficiently, correct.
Do you have, uh, something like this now, or was this a new thing you were looking at?
It'd be new.
All right, thank you. Using information to drive decision-making, I think is a good thing. And if we can spend, um, seventy-five hundred dollars to create efficiencies for, um, for both our staff and our equipment, that will create efficiencies for our community members and better services for our community members as well. So I, I support keeping this money, um, in the budget and moving ahead with that purchase. I'm, I'm worried that the funds might not be available, uh, this year anymore. And so I think it's important that we move ahead in two thousand nineteen with that investment.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Up too late. We can, we can try to answer the question, though, still.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Alderman Nichols?
Can I ask a question? Two sixty-six, page one ninety-one, uh, is fund two sixty-six for that twenty-five hundred. Um, is that, that's not a levy account, so where does that come from?
It's the recycling fund. And John, can you better explain the funding for that?
In the recycling fund, there is a levy amount that we do have on there. If you turn to page one eighty-nine. Similarly, as for transportation aids, don't cover all of public works projects. And the general fund, same is true for the recycling fund. The recycling, um, dollars that we get from the state are like seventy-one thousand dollars in grant dollars. However, the levy is three hundred twenty-seven thousand, zero, one, one, which is the very top line on page one eighty-nine. Account number two sixty-six dash zero, 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 dash four eleven. The three twenty-seven oh eleven, that's the amount that we levy for taxes. And it is a slight reduction from two thousand eighteen because we do have a little bit of a fund balance in there to accommodate that. But that is not a permanent, that we can leave the levy amount at a lower level. This, this was a, 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 a recommendation that came from the mayor and from staff, that we could do this for one year. But there is a, a significant levy amount. So this amount here, reduction twenty-five hundred, would reduce the levy here in the recycling fund. And as the three funds that combine to create the levy that you adopt tonight, you have the general fund, the recycling fund, and debt service. So this is affecting one of the three funds. This is, this is definitely, you know, this is, adds to the laundry list of reductions for the levy.
Okay, so they are levied dollars, but they're put into the recycling fund when they're received?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, so if you want to understand a little bit more what's levy and what isn't, if you look at your tab that says introduction and summary and the page right behind it, you'll see that there's the general fund, there's a revenues fund, capital projects, debt service, post-employment sick leave, and recycling, and you add those all together, and that's where the levy comes from. That's probably a little easier than the explanation John gave you, going through all the numbers and pages.
Seeing that we're on that issue or that topic, we had, uh, Mrs. Taylor this evening asking about that, uh, I wrote it down, the, uh, fee on carts and that whether it was to be sunset. Could that be addressed?
We can talk about it. We did talk a little bit internally about that. Did you have anything to add?
Unless you just want that for another day, but.
We can.
As far as we have been able to find, there has been, or there was no sunset clause on that. Uh, the five dollars per year does go into our fund to replace carts. I mean, if you notice on page, uh, one ninety-one, we do have, uh, four thousand dollars for carts that we have to budget for every year. Then we also have similar stuff for garbage, uh, carts as well. So we do replace carts every year and cart parts. So that's what that five dollars goes towards.
I thought that, uh, once you needed a new cart, if you damaged it, you paid for it.
That's never been practiced before.
That's what I thought. So if they just like, like, let's say it got squashed too hard or something, then we would just, then we would, all right.
And these carts are probably nearing twenty-five plus years old. So they're, the plastic is just starting to break down and we're replacing a lot of them at this point.
I was just going to say, if there was a nuclear bomb, I would jump in mine. Those things are strong.
If, if they damage it intentionally, we would charge them for it. But if it's just regular wear and tear, then we would replace them. Alderman Grady?
Yes, I have one more than I'm doing for now. And it's, um, page one sixty-five, Sam, Director Schrader. Looking good without the, uh, glasses on tonight. That's why we're going to cut the heck out of your budget now. You can't see the numbers, so goodbye, budget. All right. I'm looking at that hotel study. Um, it's your engineering is count twenty-one dot oh two, hotel study for twenty thousand dollars. I know Manash is, you know, developing their city and doing things that, you know, gentleman from the Shopko Plaza here is tonight showing a bunch of things for development. But I'm looking to take, if possible, forty-five hundred dollars out of that fund and stick them into three different TIFs. A TIF ten, eleven, and twelve. For each one of those TIFs would be fifteen hundred dollars that would make up the forty-five hundred. So you wouldn't really be losing the money. I'm just taking that out of the, out of the levy for. I'm just taking that out of the levy for this upcoming tax year.
Yeah. And I wouldn't see any issue with that as that could potentially help those TIF districts should the market point to those areas. As long as John doesn't have an issue.
And a second from Alderman Krueger. Any discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify again, is that 4,500 total divided between three TIFs or is that $4,500 into each TIF?
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is the 4,500 total, but I'm taking 1,500 into three different TIFs. 1,500 in TIF 10, 1,500 in TIF 11, 1,500 in TIF 12 for a total of 4,500.
Thank you.
Debbie is busily typing all of these numbers.
12.
Yes.
I was on the north side of Appleton today and I was very surprised to see another huge hotel going up over by that mobile station. Unbelievable. And then, of course, there's that franchise one going up near the airport on College Avenue. And I'd say 10, 15 years ago, we were told, there's no market anymore. And since that time, I think maybe a dozen hotels have gone up.
We've got too many zeros. There you go. 10, 11, 12, 1,500 each. Yep, that should be good. Okay. So that's the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, if we could have a roll call vote on that, please.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Alderman Krueger?
Thank you, Mayor. John, the funding for the Fox City Regional Partnership was divided up between several places within TIFs and several places within the levy. Where were they located on the levy again?
It should just be the $3,000 located in, on page 165 under 2110, marketing. So of the, I believe, $20,000 that was budgeted, the $3,000 is in the community development budget.
I'd like to make amendment to remove that $3,000 off the levy.
There's a motion, a second, to remove $3,000 from 100, are you ready to type?
Yes.
100, 304, 562, 21-10. Yep. Alderman, there is a motion, a second, it should be Steven Merk, Alderman Stevigny.
I just want to say that I still am a believer in this particular fund, but I think we're exceeding the amount that we should be giving. And I believe that this particular cut, especially that it's coming from the levy, is a good one.
If, if I may?
Sure.
Is that proposal to replace it so we remain a fully invested dollar per capita community, getting those benefits? Or is it to just cut the $3,000?
It's to cut $3,000. I'm sorry, it's to cut the 3,000 right out of the levy. Keep the ones that are not in the levy in the TIFs, take that 3,000 out of the levy.
So I guess what Director Schrader is asking is, should we increase each of the TIFs by $1,000 apiece? Or do you want to reduce the total amount that you're giving them?
I'm comfortable with just reducing the total amount.
And I, I don't know what that holistically does to the city of Manash as an investor, but it would knock us off as a dollar per capita. And I don't know.
Well, I know, but there's a lot of the communities that opted out of it that are no longer. And quite honestly, I'm not seeing the benefit of it. And I don't think a lot of people are either. You know, but we're still invested in it. We're going to be a little bit lower than the per capita, you know, but I don't think it's going to harm us in any way on that.
I think Sam and I have seen some good things happening. I think it's good that we're leaving money within the budget for the partnership if we decide at a future date that we want to increase that extra $3,000 out of a TIF and we start seeing something coming forward. Sam could come to the council and ask for that, or one of us could bring that amendment to the council at a later date, too.
And one thing that I did mention at the budget hearing and speaking with Alderman Taylor today is that the downtown census tract is being designated as a, or was designated as an opportunity zone. These are federal funding opportunities that are coming live, you know, January 1 of this year. A lot of the rules and regulations haven't been brought together yet. I would see that the regional partnership would be a big player in not only assisting myself in divulging through those rules and regulation as time permits, but being a resource as well as marketing our properties within that area. So again, we can work through it and move forward there.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. And speaking of that economic opportunity zone designation, they could also really serve as a liaison between the city and the state WEDIC organization to help us move through any opportunity that might come the city's way. And it, you refer to it as the downtown census tract, but can you refresh everyone's memory what area that actually covers?
Yes, that census tract is from the government canal along the south to the Little Lake Butemore, along the west side, up to Sixth Street, I believe, on the north, and it's DePurier Appleton Street on the, on the far east side. And again, with that coming online, my recommendation, although we have seen, maybe have seen some communities drop out, myself, Nina, Little Shoot, we have been very blunt and firm with them about what our expectations are this summer, that I don't think they've gotten that before. They've had some turnover in staff as well as, I think they've, they've kind of gotten that message. And I'm curious to see, you know, where we go in this upcoming year. As I do think they've, they've gotten that message and they're going to be reaching out to other communities and things like that.
Anything else, Alderman Nichols?
Yeah, it just slipped my mind, though.
Okay.
I was just thinking about how given and that, I got it back, that area, that economic opportunity zone does encompass quite a bit of waterfront in our city right now. And also, the regional partnership's new director is local for the first time in a really long time. They've hired someone who lives here locally. And so I think, you know, this is a time that we should think carefully about taking back some of our funding, given the things we have going here, the area that that opportunity zone covers, and the potential resource that the Fox City Regional Partnership could be in helping us through anything that could come up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing, are you ready? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call 6-2.
Anyone else? We, I did talk with Alderman Grady about one other one. I don't know if you decided you didn't want to do that or not, but it's a pretty nice, easy one that I think is a positive thing. We are 98% sure that we are going to receive a grant through the Health Department. And we could increase the revenue from that grant by $5,000 into our fund, which would reduce our levy by $5,000. And Director McKinney does feel comfortable with doing that. So if anyone wanted to do that, we could do that as well.
Account number?
I do. Did you want to make that motion, Sam?
Sure.
Okay. The account number is 100-40s. I'm not sure what page it's on. And then 432-14-00.
I'm sorry, she yelled out something. Did you say page 14?
Page 8.
8. Page 8. We're going to make a motion to increase revenue account under Public Health Department by 5,000.
So motion, a second, by Alderman Stevigny and Grady. Is there further discussion on that one? James, did you have discussion on this one, too? Or you just want to be next?
Want to discuss this or not?
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. So this is simply adding $5,000 to a revenue?
Yes.
Account?
So we would expect to receive more than that from this grant, but some of those items are expenses that are, would not, would not be offsetting something that's already in the budget. So Director McKinney?
This is the response to the opioid crisis grant that you approved earlier this year. And we've made application and we've heard that, you know, we've got a pretty decent chance of being funded. And I feel very confident that this would be a modest increase. This particular grant would fund some staff time, and that would probably be about the $5,000 that we would already be using. And then also offset expenses for supplies and for some plans that we hope to amend in both the area of assisting people who might need addiction recovery guidance. We wouldn't be providing the guidance, we would be linking them with necessary services.
Thank you. And good luck.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that topic? Got that one ready?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Are there any other items? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that all the employees here tonight don't have to come in until 1 o'clock tomorrow.
Is there a second?
There's no second, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion for the 2019 wage salary increase for wages, for, I'm sorry, wage and salary increase of 1.25% for wages and salary over 70,000.
Yeah, I'm confused. Can you, can you, can you tell me?
Say it again, James, I couldn't hear.
Tell me what you're proposing.
I don't know how closer I can get. 2019 wage and salary increase of 1.25% for wages and salary over 70,000.
So you're proposing a zero increase for people below 70 and a 1.2 for people above 70?
This is my first motion. And a 1.75% wage increase for under 70,000.
Okay.
1.75.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Second the discussion.
Okay, there is a motion, a second, by Alderman Repala. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'm still thinking, but I didn't want to let the opportunity pass by here. Currently, or what, what was approved in Personnel Committee two weeks ago was a 2.25% cost of living adjustment to all employees. I'm being asked to do math on the spot and I'm not good at it. 1.25% plus 1.75%.
So this would be in lieu of what was approved in Personnel Committee?
I understand that.
Okay. It's not in addition to?
I understand that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. It sounded like you were saying it was in addition to.
No.
James, you're adding?
I'm, I feel like we might be adding more, but I'm not sure. To help me figure this out.
Sure. If you could repeat what the motion was that's on the floor right now?
So the motion was to approve a salary increase of 1.75% cost of living for those making $70,000 or less, and approve a cost of living increase of 1.25% for those making 70,000 or more, or 70,001 dollar and more. And I'm not sure how we would calculate that to get a number for the budget this evening.
That was my next question.
Yeah, the way I had, I calculated that for each, when I looked at the 168,000 that we proposed in my memo for the 2.25%, every quarter of a percent was the equivalent of So that's the way I was looking at it, at computing it. For each quarter of a percent that you go up or go down, that would have been the equivalent, Trying to do the math on all the employees that are above the 70,000 or below, that would take us a little more time to try to compute how many there are above and how many are below in total.
Yes, I think that, first of all, we would need to know the, the impact to the budget, what that means to the, to the budget. And secondly, I don't, don't at all agree with creating a tiered system or, you know, the haves and the have-nots, or using a divide and conquer strategy to treat our employees in this way. I just don't think it's, it's appropriate at all. And so I think it's important to have the numbers and to really think about what that small of an increase means to our employees and whether or not that's a good strategy for us as a community. After all, unemployment in the state of Wisconsin is hovering around 3%. People are clamoring for workers and they can't find any. We're almost making it sound like we might be willing to send some to somebody else and struggle, really struggle finding some of our own. And when we talk about maintaining and improving property values and providing adequate service and the service that is expected by our community, I can't see that happening with such a minimal
Other comments? I guess I'd like to make a comment as well. The council did approve a 2.25% increase for the fire department. The council will approve a negotiated increase for the police, which in all likelihood will be the same as the fire. be the same as the fire. That's how it happened in the past. And now two other groups. So we will basically be creating four groups of employees that will be pitting against each other for different amounts of salary increase. And what are we telling people that Group A is more important than Group B? As I would guess to believe that people are pretty concerned if their garbage gets picked up or not, or if the library's open or not. We pay good money for these services, and I would not be in favor of giving different rates to different people. I think that we should be consistent and treat all of our employees fairly and consistently. And I would not approve such a split based upon arbitrary data. Is there further discussion on that? Alderman Grady?
Maybe you can look at the, as a personnel chair, look at the pay structure and the different matrices that we do have here for the city employees and maybe come up with something in the future. But to act on something, right now, eleventh hour, I don't know if that's a good thing to do either. I think Alderman Taylor makes a good point in structuring it based on your salary. You maybe only get so much, a thousand dollars to somebody who's a lot less than a thousand dollars to someone else. But I think that matrix and how that city employees are judged on their grade scales needs to be revisited.
Alderman Sevigny?
I just want to be the devil's advocate here. Not advocating one way or another, but kind of, Mayor, with your comments, we have to realize that the person who put us in this position was our governor with Act Ten. It makes no sense that one union isn't better than another. So now we only have unions with the Police Department, Fire Department. So yes, as far as divide and conquer, or I forget the wording you used, treating them differently, we, that's already here. That's already, that already exists. Not only that, but not everybody is treated fairly when it comes to steps and step increases. There are, when you start out with, such as at the garage, there's three steps. When we have step increases?
Four or five?
Five.
I think it's five.
And then with, with our department heads, we have twelve steps. So that, that, what you were just saying, then what we ought to do is get rid of all the step increases too, by pitting or whatever.
And that would be a policy decision?
And that would be a policy decision. And it is something that I think we need to address. But I just, I'm only being the devil's advocate. You can say one thing, but yet that's not fair because it's already, it already exists, is my point.
Alderman Taylor?
And I've been involved since nineteen ninety-five and when we had all the unions. And you never get the same, you know? So all those years, we're not going out there saying the fire department got this and the street department got this and the engineering department got this. They were all on their own merit. And it's give and take throughout that process. And there was no divide and conquer. It's something, a little bit, a different twist on it, and that's fine. Simple vote up here takes care of it. And it's the pleasure of the council.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a choice, though. We can choose to treat our employees fairly and equitably. And I just want to remind everyone that we're talking about a cost of living adjustment here. We're not talking about salaries or step increases or wage scales or anything of that matter. We're talking about a cost of living adjustment of two point two five, well, the original proposal was of two point two five percent, which is below the Consumer Price Index. And so a statement was made that, yes, we're doing the best we can. We're all making a few sacrifices. But we do have a choice up here to choose, and we can choose to treat our employees fairly and equitably.
Alderman Sevigny?
I need to defend myself about the step increase thing because when we, whether it's one point seven five percent or two point two five, some people will get one point seven five percent increase if this would pass. But there are others in this community that are going to get six percent. So it's already happening, is my point. I agree with you, Alderman Nichols, on, on, you know, these, these other points that you made. But the step increase, again, I'm being the devil's advocate, it already exists. So that's all I'm going to say.
Alderman Taylor?
I look at it pretty simple, too, up here. I put in this position by the people of the Second District. And when you go to door-to-door and you meet with these people, and you knock on their door and they let you in their living room, it's a whole different side of the community. I don't know if John has the statistics that what the Medicare people are getting for an increase, what the Medicaid people are getting for an increase, what the social services are getting for an increase. But I'll bet it's nowhere nearer what my colleague says, three point some percent in the community. And there's some people out there that by, by no act of their own do they get in situations where they are. And where a city of median income isn't very high. And I represent probably the poorest district in, in the city. And when you really get to know people and talk to them, I think we're all doing pretty good. And we have great staff, we have great people. And again, you got to write your, push the button, whatever you want. It's just a, a different way to try to do something.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Attorney Captain?
The way that the motion reads right now, we have two issues that I want to bring to your attention. One is that we do have union employees. And so that one point two five percent and one point seven five percent does not take that into consideration. So there has to be some adjustment there. And then the other thing I was going to mention is with regard to police management, you may remember that the council adopted a policy regarding the differences between patrol, lieutenants, et cetera, on up, up the line to address issues of pay compression. And so this would have a negative impact on that as well.
The union contracts are ahead of us. This isn't about the, the union contracts at this time.
That's not how the motion reads. You got to have an amendment. Just non-representative.
Or, Mayor?
Yes?
I disagree with what the city attorney's saying. We already entered an agreement with the fire department. That's done. That issue's done. They're getting their increase.
They're not our employees.
Exactly. That was my second point. They're not our employees.
So, point of?
Anyways, let me finish. And then we're still, we're still waiting on what's happening with the police. And that's going to be absolute, that's going to have to be absolutely separate. So I believe that the motion is in order because he's not addressing the union representation here at this point. He's talking about all the other people that did not certify themselves back into the, to the unions.
So as a point of clarification, the motion is for non-union, only applies to non-union employees? Is what, what you're saying, Alderman Taylor? This motion only applies to non-union employees?
Non-representative in wage, salary and wage.
So anyone who is not a member of a union, this would apply to? Okay.
The motion has to say that, non-representative.
Non-representative.
It did not, so.
So I guess we probably would need a amendment. Would you like to make an amendment that this is just non-represented employees, Alderman Taylor?
That's your pleasure.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to amend, to amend that this is only non-represented employees? We'll just take a voice vote on that one? Did you have discussion on that point, Alderman?
I'm just going to say that I'm, I'll vote for the amendment because that was my understanding. Not necessarily whether, how I'm going to vote.
Yeah. So all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So the motion as amended? Oops, I'm making you. Yeah. So, sure, that looks good. Yeah, let's. I was going to say Jacobson, it doesn't work.
I, I just wanted to say that we have filled three or four common labor positions this year. For every single one of the common labor positions that we filled, had we have had one person turn us down, there was a significant drop-off in the talent that we could get. We were lucky to get the people that we did get. They have been very good employees. But we know that there would have been a very significant drop-off. I've also been told by several people that the package that has been offered, the two and a quarter percent with the increase in the health insurance, is moving backwards for the employees. And they were already not happy with the original package. I can only imagine that if this gets reduced, that they are going to be extremely unhappy. And some have already, you know, indicated that they may look elsewhere. I just fear that that may, you know, cause them to further that, you know, search.
Director Jacobson? See, I knew, I was just clairvoyant. I knew you were going to be next.
I'll let Josh go first. Just back to my memo in regards to the average employee, that if we had proposed the two point two five percent increase, that would have been about twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars for an annual wage increase. However, what we were making the recommendation for the modification for the health insurance plan was that there would be not only the premium increase, but also an additional possible one thousand dollars for a single plan, for that extra coinsurance, that third tier that was new that we would add, or a two thousand dollars for a family plan. So we were looking at that that would be an offset. And now if the, the salary increase for someone that's at the average employee would making a one point seven five percent increase, that's about nine hundred sixty-three dollars. So that's a reduction of two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I guess the way I'm looking at this is for those employees, it would be hard for some, for myself and Candy to have the employee insurance meetings with some of our employees if their wage increase is not going to be, it will be less than fifty percent of what their potential health insurance impact is going to be. Either for a single person, for a thousand dollars out of pocket, or additional two thousand dollars out of pocket. So I, the, it's going to be interesting message if, if this were to be approved. And we'd have to go and tell the employees that send this message, like Josh had already mentioned. So I just thought I'd make mention of that, that it's, that the average employee increase would be nine hundred sixty-three dollars. But we know about at least forty, at least for this year, forty percent of the employees were hitting, would have dipped into that tier, that third tier of a thousand or two thousand additional amount. And depending on what happens next year, it could be, maybe fifty percent of the employees could be in that tier. But the thing is that this increase on an average employee would not cover the health insurance out-of-pocket costs that they might be reflected with. So I just want to assure that with you, that because that is a message that we would, as the HR staff team, would end up having to explain to all of other employees.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion fails on roll call three five.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion for two thousand nineteen wage salary increase of one point seven five percent. And that's for non-represented employees.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Without repeating what I said before, because I, I would say it again, but I won't. This still leaves people with less money than they, in their take-home pay than they have today. And in this market, it's just, it's not acceptable in my mind. And we've had to spend thousands of dollars recruiting on recruiters and headhunters to fill some of our positions. And I'm not sure we want to be there again. And even then, it was limited applicants, very few to pick from. Things to remember. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll put it up first to make sure we have it.
Okay. Yes.
Motion fails on roll call three five.
Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to make a motion, two thousand nineteen wage salary increase of two percent for non-represented employees.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Grady?
Okay, so Director Jacobs, now two percent. You crunch the numbers really quick, what does that really do for us?
That would be a reduction of eighteen thousand six six seven.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all employees, or is that not including police? And then what is the increase for police? And what is the increase for library?
That is the grand total of everyone. If you want to split it apart for just the non, the non-union police, we could come up with a number for that. I, I don't know what the pleasure is of the council, of, you know, how you want to handle the police union, because we don't have, right now, we have everybody budgeted at one level at the two point two five. So if you're making a reduction, in specific, we could, this, this amount was my estimate for the total for all employees. The one hundred and sixty-eight would have been the total amount.
And just the levy accounts?
This actually would have been all, this would have been all, everybody. This would have been grand total.
So, so basically, this motion, we cannot determine an amount for the budget. So if this motion would pass, the budget would have to remain as is?
When, when we did the?
Because we have no number.
When we did the split for the reduction in the health insurance, we did, it was roughly an eighty-twenty split. So we could go with an eighty percent of this amount, of whatever the amount is, would be the levy funds. And the twenty percent would be all other funds.
So we could guess, basically. Because we don't know what the police is...
No, I don't know the police number right off the top.
Necessarily know what the levy amount is either. So, okay. So is there further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Again, folks would be taking home less than they are right now. And that's a questionable practice in such a tight market.
Alderman Taylor? Someone could make a...
I worked for Fortune 500 company, year and a half. They moved. And for the last 12 years, it was a sliding pole. They gave you a bunch of money, and you had to figure it out. And the insurance went up. Didn't pay for dental at one time, then you had to pay for dental. And the last 12 years was, there's the pole. That's how people out there in the public operate. Some people don't work, they don't know that. And that's the way the real world is. And it's not always rosy. And again, let's go back to the people. I haven't heard the numbers on Medicare, Medicaid, welfare...
Do you have those numbers for us, Alderman Taylor, to compare with?
And the 3%, you know, that we're talking at. Everybody's getting 3% out there. But is that really what the public's getting out there? I don't think so. And we pay a solid wage. I looked at the wages, glad Alderman Seven, I put that in our packet Thursday, or Wednesday. It's pretty eye-opening. There's a lot of people out there, but a lot more tremendous responsibility, working around the clock, working weekends, that don't make that type of money. And you gotta look at it from the other side of the fence, too. And then you gotta balance it out with the people that are home, and what they can afford. And we just heard this lady in here tonight telling us how skewed everything is with the city of Manasha.
Further discussion? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. My wife and I actually sat down and went over wages, salaries, and all that. And the salaries for the positions are pretty much in line with the public. There are differences between private sector and public, and public sector jobs.
Steve, do you want to tell the council what your wife does for a living? Just, it makes a little difference.
She does HR. I mean, in the private sector, yeah, there's bonuses. And the employees, or the employers are actually doing great stuff just to retain their employees, that is, that is true. I know some of the concerns are just steps and all that, but I think, as Alderman Grady said, that's something that we have to deal with, that we should be dealing with as the process, and not here right now. And you just can't compare private to public, apples to apples, all the time. I mean, there's a lot of different variances in there, you know. A lot of the public is, or the private sector is getting a 1% raise, but yet they're still getting big bonuses, too. You know, it's, unless you have all the numbers in front of you, it's hard to compare apples to apples. We did go through the Personnel Committee and voted for the raise. I think it's something we need to take a look at in the future, on how we're gonna do this. But I don't think right now is the appropriate time to do something like this. Well, that's just my opinion.
Seeing no further discussion, Director Jacobs?
With the technology, Director Radomski pulled up, CNBC is just announced back in early October that the social security check will get a 2.8% boost in 2019. So for those that are senior citizens in the community, a 2.8%... Very well could be. But it's just indicating a 2.8% boost in 2019.
So, so we're right in line, basically, because our health insurance costs are going up, as well as our rate, our...
Yes.
Wage rates. Alderman Taylor?
What's that, what did you quote there?
CNBC.
As the president of this company says, "That's fake news." So you can't believe it, can you? That's what the president says.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion fails on roll call 3-5.
Still would fail.
Alderman Sebanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I debated a lot this evening, and you notice I was kinda quiet during this process. And there's a reason for that. I want those aldermen that want to come forward with what they propose, they should not be ostracized for it. It's what they believe, and you should respect that. I have a strong feeling about it, too. I've said, I've said this to this body before, I don't live in that world. You have it extremely good here, extremely good. If you didn't get a 2.5%, you're still doing very well. If we reduce everybody's salary by about $5,000 or $6,000, you're still doing very well. You should be very pleased and happy about that. Now, now to the other end of it. I am not in favor of reductions. And I just wanted those aldermen to be able to have their opportunity, to be able to say what they feel. I work a lot closer with staff than I think most people. And if I thought there was one employee that I thought should be gone, they would be gone. Everyone I've worked with are the most professional people and have gone out of their way, in every possible way, to show me the highest respect and provide whatever information I needed. And I'm very grateful, and that's why I'm in favor of the increase. The other night, Alderman Nichols mentioned the cost of living adjustment that the federal government put out. And that number was wrong. Josh brought the right number up this evening. Now, all of my indicators are, is the cost of living is 2.8%. So I have to look at it, 2.25, that's fair. That's a very good fair increase, and that's why I'm gonna support it. So in some ways, maybe we should have been given a 2.8%. But I think the employees and our unions realize the situation that we're in, and they're helping us out. So I'm grateful for that. And if there are no more motions, I would like, are there any more motions on the budget? Okay, otherwise, otherwise I would go, you know, we could just take up that, that one item on the agenda that we skipped over on both seven and eight. Mayor, if you have no problem with that?
I don't know that we can have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Oh, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor.
Oh, I thought, oh, I thought we voted already.
No, for the whole budget right now.
Okay, all right.
So, but you could make the motion, you could make those two motions as part of your amendments to the budget?
We don't need to, because they're in the budget. But, you know, I just thought, these people want to go, probably get home, and...
So we could take up the whole budget, then? And then we can come back for those two directly after?
But I think Randy has a few more, I think Becky has a few more, so... But, again, sorry if I got a little loud here, I tend to do that. But if you sit in this chair, too, you have to realize that we're also looking out for our taxpayers. And it, Alderman Taylor's absolutely correct. They are having it rough out there. They are having it very rough. Just because the markets are doing well, your average citizen is not doing that well. And our stats, we get stats here. And I think our average salary in this community is about $35,000. And most, everyone here is making double that. So, we, we need to thank them. And I said most everybody. Not everybody. We have to thank them for paying those taxes and, and, and helping us out. The other night, John, you gave us a number of what we pay in salaries, and then what we provide in services. And it was like some kind of 50-something to 40-something. Do you remember?
I do have that, I thought I better have that available, just in case. For like, the example, for the general fund, our budget is 17.8 million. 9.8 million is for wages and fringe benefits, which is 55%. And all other expenditures is 45% or just over $8 million.
Okay, thank you, John.
So it's a 55, 45 split.
So someone was listening to you that evening?
Yes, exactly.
And my point is this, is that I think that once we get to the point where salaries just go too far, and services are less, we're doing a disservice. We need to be probably in that 50-50 range. So that kinda struck me. I know that that's probably the case in most communities, but, you know, cities are to provide services to help out the community. But when the salaries take, start taking over all that, kinda defeats the purpose. So, anyways, I'm sorry to take up so much time. I know Alderman Nichols and Alderman Repella have some additional things.
Alderman Taylor is up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Never let it be said that, it seems like this reduction in wages was made me thought as, I was being squeezed that, I don't think of the employees, the employees in this community that work here since 1995 that are involved are excellent. And it's, it's not a, a representation of anything you do. You all do a great job. Look at this year, the police department got the accreditation award. And our street department is second to none in the whole Greater Fox Valley. Excellent park department, wonderful health department, so... Community development always does their job. And so by, by trying to make those cuts, and there's eight people that have to make that. And I have to do what I hear from the public, and that's who I represent. And at no times was demeaning any of the people that work for this community. You're all great acts.
I'm just gonna add, if we want to keep good employees, and we really respect them, we need to pay them fairly. And I think what was proposed was fair. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. With all due respect, what I stated the other night was a 3.3% consumer price index statistic that was released by the federal government, not any sort of cost of living adjustments.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Page 52. The jail prisoner meal charge, I'd like to take that, move that down. Page 52, it's the only one on there. Like to take that down. Chief, what do they get fed? For $14,000.
We have no choice in this. This is a fee that is paid to Winnebago County Sheriff's Department that houses our people on warrants.
Okay.
So I don't know what they get fed.
Okay.
We get set a, I think it's like $55 per day that we pay to have our people housed on our warrants. So I know Pam with the municipal court has tried to do a lot to do things like tax intercept and other ways to have a person pay a fine that they're found guilty of. But the judge does impose, based upon what the violation would have been, sometimes jail sentence for failing to pay for the fine. So if there's no money in the budget, it has to come from somewhere. Otherwise, Winnebago County won't house our prisoners.
Okay.
So, in this year, we're, we're overspending that account as it is. So there's, it's a cumulative effect because there's more and more warrants that get issued every single year. And if they don't pay it, they go to jail.
But the days of bread and water are way past.
I don't think they do bread and water, I don't know they're allowed to anymore.
Okay, all right, that was just, just a thought.
Of course.
Thank you very much. I got page 152. This is for, let's see here, oh, it's for the flowers. Brian, the flowers are for $45,000, I'd like to cut that. What, what goes into the $45,000?
Well, that 318 subaccount, that is our, kind of our bread and butter account, is, if you will, for just a lot of items. You see them there, concrete, lumber, soil, flowers. Flowers, is Adam still back there? I don't know what the exact number is on the flowers, is that about 6, 7,000? Yeah, about, about 6,000 on flowers.
Okay, because I just noticed in like 17, it was 36,000. Then it went up to 48, or maybe even 48,000, or 44, 81, 841. And now you want 45,000. I was just looking at a way to lower that at some point.
So, a lot of that had to do with mulching our playground equipment. That's why we went up a lot this year. And I think there was some roundabout mulching, too. Yeah, so we spent a lot of money on mulch this year. And I would expect that we'd have a fair amount of expense on that next year as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Got a menu?
I have one for you, if someone wants to go to page 142. I can't really say what the prisoners eat, but I can tell you that the cats and dogs apparently are a little cheaper. As we're always... All right, well, we're on the same page. Here's some good news for you. Always, obviously, trying to look to save a buck or two. And I can look at my crystal ball and tell you, on the next admin meeting, there's a updated animal shelter contract that you're going to be looking at with reduced costs for us, based upon the number of animals that they handle for us a year. I'm thinking we would be able to shave $1,500 out of this budget. So if someone wants to make the motion to cut $1,500 out of this budget, I found you some money there.
I'll make the motion for $1,500 off of animal impoundment.
532?
Dot 25-01.
I had actually 2,000 myself.
Me, too?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, yes. I was just so frustrated, I stopped, but thank you. There you go, you got one. Cruel to animals.
Alderman Taylor, did you want to discuss? Yep, so there's the motion. If there's no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Alderman Grady?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, the chief, has he's got any other pages you want us to look at?
at?
Okay. I don't.
I don't know where that's going to go. I think it's going to hit the bottom and then go.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Josh, what page is your snow removal fund on?
Maybe page is eighty-two and eighty-three.
We have the rolled salt there, but where's the, what is the actual plowing?
The entire budget is the actual plowing. I mean, we pay for the salt, it's the equipment that we use, but the wages, the vehicle rental, that's all built into the budget.
Okay, so last, in two thousand seventeen, we had two or three, three forty-five, five ninety-one. Okay, and I thought last, this year, to date, I thought we had quite a reduction in snow removal.
We did at one point, however, that was before April.
April ten.
Yeah, when we had twenty-two inches, that storm itself was about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's where that change came. All right, thank you.
So John?
I just want to point out that the budget for that line, or for that area, snow and ice removal, was three hundred thirty-seven thousand, three seventy-four. However, we're expecting, because of that April snowstorm, that we might be about three hundred seventy thousand, and the budget that the department has presented to you is at three hundred forty-four thousand. So they're presenting it lower if we end up with the same kind of fiasco that we had during two thousand eighteen. We, that's not even an increase of anything, so if we have another awful April or a different time of the year storm, there's no way they will make budget with that. So it just, it is very low, especially if El Nino or whatever does or doesn't kick in, so. There could be issues there that could overrun in nineteen's budget.
So John, have you kept a running total then here all night? We're at fifteen thousand plus, a little bit, I think, right?
Um, I'm hoping fifty-one-five of the levy. I'll check with Jen, but I think we're about fifty-one thousand, five hundred is the amount of the levy savings, which would be a combination of recycling and general fund combined, and with the disservice, of course. And I do have an update on the rate. I don't know if you're interested in the rate at all at this point, or?
It looks like there may be one motion here yet.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Go ahead, Alderman Nichols.
Thank you.
Did you have another motion or just question?
No, I was going to ask if we could take a short recess first to allow Director Jacobs and Ms. Assman to recalc, to calculate the numbers and come back with the total reductions and what that means, and just a short recess for myself, too. Thank you.
We can do that as long as Mark doesn't have another question.
Okay.
We'll do that first then.
When we're done with that, that would be great. Thank you, much appreciated.
Go ahead, Mark.
Just a curious question. Thank you, Mayor. Josh, on the overtime and double time.
In which budget, Mark?
It would be the same budget.
The snow plowing?
The snowmobile. Page eighty-two, double time, overtime, double time. How does that, twenty-four thousand, when, how does that work on the snow removals? From what I understand, if somebody comes in and works, they get the next day off or something like that, or not? Or are they putting in more hours than?
We do try and work it out, where if they do come in overnight, then they don't work that day. However, there's always weekends, there's always storms that are, require us to be out multiple days in a row, there's multiple days where we have to, you know, be out doing certain things. I mean, it's not all one, I mean, these guys aren't just doing snow and ice removal for a week, they have a number of different tasks that they also need to get done. So we try and do our best to accommodate the city's needs without the overtime, however, with snow and ice removal especially, these storms happen Friday nights, Saturday nights, and by then you've already used all your hours.
Oh, okay, yeah, I wasn't thinking of weekends. Thank you.
And the two guys in back did a test that it snows every Christmas Eve, every Christmas Day, and every New Year's Day. I think every one of them, since I've been mayor, it snowed. So.
Well, why don't you change that?
I do not do ride-alongs those days.
Say you will.
Good. So any other questions about the budget? We'll, we'll let them do a little bit of calculation quick.
My only question is, I would want to take the break at the time that you've got all adjustments, either pluses or minuses, are in, so Jen and I can make sure we got the grand totals done for everything.
Yep, okay. You got another one?
To go forward here, right?
Yeah.
All right.
You got one more?
I do. Did you say, okay, never mind. All right, I'm on page two hundred sixty-eight.
So a long ways back.
And. Two sixty-eight. This is account four, seven, zero, zero, six, oh, one, five, five, one, eighty-two, oh, one, buildings. The library parking lot replacement for thirty-three thousand dollars. On page two hundred and seventy. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a different account. Four, seven, zero, one, one, zero, three, five, four, one, eight, eight, zero, two, under street construction. The Lawndale Court to West End to Lawndale Drive for ten thousand, four hundred, eight dollars. And. Yep.
Seventy, ten, oh, three. Dash, five, thirty-one. Dot, two, dash, oh, two. Ten thousand, four hundred, four hundred and eighty.
One more. Back in eighty-two, oh, one, under buildings, the parking lot seal for Station Thirty-Six. Shoot, I might have just messed this up.
Okay, so then we're going bad.
Yeah, Station Thirty-Six, parking lot seal for six thousand, five hundred dollars.
So this one is four, seventy, five, oh, five, oh, one. Five twenty-two. Back into oh, one. Six thousand, five hundred.
Yes, I would like, I move to, transfer those to their respective one hundred accounts.
So what would be? What would be the appropriate motion, Director Jacobs? Oh, you gave your microphone away.
I think our preference would be is to have these go maybe line by line, instead of just doing as one lump total. I mean, the total of those three is forty-nine thousand, nine, oh, eight, but it might be cleaner if we would have them as in. Okay, okay. I checked with Jennifer, and she thought we could probably do it all together as one lump sum of forty-nine thousand, nine, oh, eight. However, we refer to where the, each account number would be of the from and the words moved to. So the three account numbers for those three, and then moving those to the three account numbers in Fund One Hundred, mirroring those, that would be the part of the motion. So that means.
Is there's a second, first of all?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because I don't think there is one.
So Alderman Nichols, is that, so your motion is to take these out of the four seventy, which is the borrowing CIP funds, and move them into the levy funds, correct?
Yes, because we have the ability to pay for these projects upfront, instead of paying for them over fifteen years, plus interest.
So is there a second for that motion? Don't see a second, so the motion would die due to lack of a second. Alderman Sevignac? Oops, I gotta press this button, don't I?
Thank you, Mayor. Here's the reason that I wouldn't be in favor of that. This is a capital project, it should be spread over time. Those people that use that, who live in this community today, shouldn't have to pay it all upfront. It should be spread over a period of time for them to pay on that. So that's why I would be opposed to that. I understand what you're doing, and just so the rest of the council knows, there is a possible small, small savings, but I think it's more important that we reduce the levy this time around for the taxpayers.
So are we complete with all the motions, so Director Jacobs can calculate everything then? If so, we'll take. No, no, John, you can't make motions.
No, I'm not, I'm just. My only thing is, this room, remember when we talked about the system in this room? It's sitting in the CIP fund right now, so I guess my question is, what is the direction that you're looking for funding? Remember, we have twenty thousand dollars in there, and we brought it to retention, I think it was a week and a half ago, that that number should be higher than that if we do a full, complete recall of the camera system and the equipment we've got behind you here?
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. You and I talked about this briefly this afternoon, and there was twenty thousand dollars. There is twenty thousand dollars in our budget books, but when Patrick presented that information, there was closer to a thirty thousand dollar amount in his presentation. So could you rectify that situation, explain the difference, and then perhaps we can make an informed decision from there?
The quote came in at twenty thousand dollars. However, that was a verbal quote. Then when he sent it through, as I had explained last time, he didn't have all of the parts in the, in the quote. It came in at twenty-eight, twenty-eight, or twenty, well, the quote originally came in on hard copy for twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six and twenty. We can take out one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars for one of the microphones that I'm holding that had also been in that quote. Taking that out puts us at twenty-seven, seven ninety-eight.
Did we not do that?
Could you?
It was not officially approved, it was just said, if we're going to do it, you'll need to increase it.
What was the amount that included the microphone?
Twenty-nine, seven, oh, six, and twenty cents.
Twenty-nine, seven, oh, six, and twenty cents. Thank you for that.
Sure.
I'm looking for the common council budget.
It's one of the first pages.
Yes, I know.
Page two sixty-seven.
Page what?
Two sixty-seven.
It's at the bottom of page two sixty-seven.
Yes, I have that one. What I'm looking for is the common council budget earlier in the book.
It's on page fifteen.
Thank you, fifteen. Oh, I was right there. I think this evening especially has illustrated the difficulty with microphones, and that it, in, also, we have aging equipment, and we've made a commitment to videotaping our meetings and presenting them to the public in the best format and best, most efficient way possible. And so I move to, I'm on page two sixty-seven, and the account number is four, seven, zero, zero, four, zero, five, five, one, three, eighty, oh, five. To remove that twenty thousand dollars from the capital improvement budget, place it in the common council budget. Which account would that be, Director Jacobs?
We could add a new account number there, so it mirrors what would be in the capital improvement. We could just add an eighty, oh, five, for other equipment.
Eighty, oh, five, for other equipment, and then add an additional ten thousand dollars to that to cover the cost for replacing the whole system and an additional microphone.
So it would be an amount of thirty thousand dollars, then?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? I see no second, so the motion would die due to lack of a second, after all that typing. Alderman Sevignac, you're up next, maybe? There we go.
Okay, I'm glad that Alderman Nichols brought this up, because we do have to address the addition that would be put into the capital budget. So I'm not big on that microphone. I don't care if, you know, I'm glad that we're finally using the other one, too. I don't care if, we only have a couple nights where we have to hand the microphone over. What was it, like seventeen hundred dollars? That's a lot of money for a microphone. Nineteen hundred, even worse. So what was the total, total that, in order to get the meetings televised over the next ten years here, as a capital project?
If we remove the microphone out, that would be twenty-seven, eight hundred. We already have twenty thousand already in the budget.
So we need how much?
We would need seventy-eight hundred.
Okay, I move that, we, do you need a motion to do that this evening?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we add seventy-eight hundred to the capital budget for the televising of the council meetings.
There's a motion, a second, to increase the CIP budget, five, one, three, eighty, oh, five, from twenty thousand to twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. John, just so I understand this rate, we get a franchise fee, and we televise this meeting to the people that help contribute to that franchise fee. Is that a hundred and eighty thousand or something?
It's a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Thank you. And that money just goes into the general fund, as that will be doing that.
A hundred percent in the general fund. 100% in the general fund, yes.
Okay, so we don't, uh, take this equipment out of that fund, huh?
No.
All right, thank you.
But we could look at it as basically coming out of there because it comes out of the general fund, basically when we're paying our, our borrowed money, so. So, when the people do pay that franchise fee, they are paying for, for that service.
So, there's a motion, a second. I don't see any other discussion. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Any others now? Can we let John work his magic for, you got five minutes?
Tom Stoffel did it in 30s.
Okay, we'll take a short break.